Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We're going to get started. It is 12, I mean 10:15, it's 12 o'clock somewhere in the world, but not here. We're going to get started. This is a committee of public safety to hear and talk about Resolution Number 160081. Its primary sponsor is Councilman Johnson. Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution 160081, authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings regarding the establishment of a comprehensive strategy for reducing and eliminating youth gun violence.
I mentioned the primary author, Councilman Johnson. Also with us today is Councilman Dom and Councilman Greenly. We do not need a quorum for this resolution, although we believe during the course of the hearings, we will actually have one. I would like to recognize Councilman Johnson for some remarks on this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for taking time out of their schedule to be here as we address a critically important issue here in the city of Philadelphia. Today, we are embarking on a process to bring attention to an issue that is of greater concern to me, my colleagues, and the city of Philadelphia as a whole. Today's purpose is to hold hearings aimed at identifying and addressing the underlying causes of youth gun violence. With the tragic events of March 9 freshening our collective memories, and night in which five Philadelphians were murdered by gun violence, and even this last Easter weekend, down in my district in South Philadelphia, we saw a young man pull out a gun while families were trying to enjoy themselves at a carnival. It's important that we rise to address this issue and make it the number-one priority here in the city of Philadelphia. Most of you may or may not know that I've been working on this issue since 1998, when a cousin of mine was murdered in the streets of South Philadelphia, and several of my friends were murdered. And so for me, this is an issue that always has been very passionate to me. And at that particular point in time in my life, I made a decision to not be a problem in my community, but be a part of the solution, and use my anger and energy to embark on addressing the issue of youth gun violence. I remember when several of my friends were organizing to go retaliate after the guys who murdered my cousin, that I made a conscious decision to use that pain and that anger to carry on his legacy in a positive manner, and hosted my first youth gun violence rally to begin focusing on the issue of peace in our neighborhood and not guns. Most recently, Council President Clark has appointed me to the Criminal Justice Reform Committee with my colleague, Councilman Curtis Jones, to begin looking at how do we address the issue of reentry as it relates to addressing the issue of youth gun violence. A week ago, we had more than 70 faith-based leaders in a roundtable discussion on how can we comprehensively address this issue that has been taking over our city. And as the weather gets warm, and I don't think that's an excuse for people to operate in a uncivil manner, but as the weather gets warm, we usually see a rise in the level of gun violence. So this isn't a hearing just for the sake of having a hearing. This is a hearing for us as officials of government, as leaders of our various city agencies, but most importantly, the community. Because every idea that has been effective that I have worked on, in the capacity of me even being a state representative on a state level or a council person, has come from the community. And as we embark upon this budget process, we want to make sure that we're addressing an issue that's very, very critical. And amongst African-American young men between the ages of 15 to 30, the number-one killer is homicide by gun violence. And so we should never live in a community where it's normal for a life to be taken. We should never live in a community where it's normal for, when we go and speak in these schools throughout our city, and we ask the young people who are there, "How many of you have witnessed someone being murdered?" And half the kids in the classroom raised their hand. "How many of you know someone or who are related to someone who has been murdered?" Half of the hands are raised. And so we are really in a state of emergency. We are in a state of emergency, and this committee will do everything in its power possible to reduce the issue of youth gun violence. And as I turn the mic over back to Mr. Chair, we also talk about the homicides. We rarely talk about the number of shootings that result in young men with the loss of their arms, with their loss of their limbs. We often don't talk about the mental health, post-traumatic stress. When we go out and do vigils in the community, and you see children coming up, participating in these prayer vigils, with a shirt on that says "Rest in Peace," these are children we're talking about. And so we need to also begin engaging on, we have the Health Department, Mental Health Department, Behavioral, Department of Behavioral Health, to also give us insight on how are we dealing with, I mean, if soldiers come back from Iraq, they deal with post-traumatic stress. Well, we have young people dealing with post-traumatic stress here in the city of Philadelphia. And you wonder how, as they grow up, they channel their energy, most retaliate, most find forms of aggression. And so I want to sincerely thank everyone for taking time for being here today. And at this time, I'm going to turn over the microphone. And I think Councilman Curtis Jones and myself, and Council President Clark, probably have the most violent districts in the city of Philadelphia. I know at least Strawberry Mansion area, when I look on the news, is shootings, North Philly, West Philly, and South Philadelphia. And so we're going to, and I'm committed to stay on this issue, as I have always been. But we need to take this to a whole different level. We shouldn't be quiet while our young men, I think this weekend, it was young ladies who got shot, North Philly, somebody sitting on the porch. And at a time when you can't even protect the women in your community, that's the problem. That's the problem. And so I'm going to turn the microphone over to Chairman Curtis Jones, and thank all my colleagues for taking time out of their schedule for participating in this hearing. Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. For the record, we have Councilwoman Gium and Councilman Heenan and Councilman Talenberger, who has joined this committee today. I want to thank you for sponsoring this bill. From the time you walked in this building, you have made this your number-one priority, doing a whole array of other things, but always coming back to this very important issue. We share a common bond in that regard, that for me personally, and you may think we fell off turnip trucks into these jobs, but we lived a life before we got here. When I was 16 years old on Upland Way, we were walking to a social. And some of you are old enough to know what a social was. And a young lady I was walking with, with a crowd of people, a young man came out of the driveway, shot into the crowd, and murdered the young lady I was with. This is not an academic pursuit made up of Xs and Os for me. This is a real-life, day-to-day quality of life in my community. Ever since then, every year, there is someone, someone I know or am related to, that winds up a victim of this. It got so bad that at one of my rec centers, the young lady, one of the young ladies that was out there when the homicide happened that I was involved with, she had kids who were victims. And we look up and we look across the vigil, and I see her, and we see that this is a generational phenomenon and a scourge. And I would say to you, and those of you who are going to testify today, that if 300 whales washed up on the schoolkill shores, every marine biologist in the nation would be down in Philadelphia at schoolkill to find out why this tragedy has befell the whales. And whales are important, but Black Lives Matter too. And our babies are getting killed at a rate that is epidemic. It is generational. It impacts every aspect of our life, not the victim, not just the perpetrator, but all of their relatives and families are impacted by this. It is a drain on our tax dollars. It's somewhere in the neighborhood, a quarter of a million dollars every time we prosecute a murder. And with the new technology, victims are seeing their kids murdered on tapes in the bowels of our justice system. This is a real issue that requires real solutions. And then finally, one thing I will say is, we think we're pretty smart up here. But you're not educated, we are not educated, in the street of what's really going on day to day. The reality that we live in is not the reality some of our babies live in. And you're going to hear some of that today. You're going to hear some of that. So my smart people to the left and to the right, and in the audience, take note of what's being said, and try to incorporate that into a solution. You'll find that as chair of this committee, I don't do group well. I mean, I know what group is about, and what we're supposed to do, and release all that, but if it's not related to a solution, or something that you or we need to do to solve this, it is just a feel-good thing. We want to put our money where our mouth is. We want to find ways to support what is working, create what is necessary to make our streets and our children safe. So with that in mind, will the clerk please read the first panel to testify?
Commissioner Richard Ross, Philadelphia Police Department; Dr. Camilla Jackson, Deputy Chief Medical Officer; Terrell Bagby, Office of Reintegration; George Mosey, First Deputy District Attorney; Josh Shapiro, Chairman of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency.
So most of you have testified before, so you know to say your name. For the record, welcome here. If you have written testimony, make sure the clerk has that. Feel free to abbreviate as much of it as you want, but make sure that your salient points are put on the record. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and other committee members. Glad to be here today for this very important issue. You actually have my notes of testimony, so if you will, I will summarize much of what I have to say. But what both of you have said thus far is so on point and so critical. I want to say also that we work with many of the people seated here today. They are our partners, both community-based organizations as well as those in government. And so we're happy to have that kind of collaboration. But you spoke about this epidemic that plagues this country, and particularly big cities. And it is just that, an epidemic. And we work tirelessly, and law enforcement along with our partners, to try to stem the tide of this gun violence that we see across this city. And what I would also point out is, and you touched on it, is the impact. And it's not just a medical impact. I mean, it's the opportunity cost with some of these victims as well as the offenders. They never get a chance to make additional income, to get educated, to have children. And so some have estimated those costs in the millions just per victim. So some of the things that we are doing, and not all encompassing by any stretch of the imagination, our law enforcement efforts, first and foremost. You know, we are very data-driven in the police department. And I think both of you at one time or another may have either seen or aware of our Comstat process, where we target, we actually identify every crime that is committed across this city, particularly gun violence. And some of the things that we think are effective, at least to the degree that we can be, is our hotspot areas. We talk about smart policing. You have to know where it's happening, first and foremost. Our biggest issue, along with many other cities across this country, is retaliatory violence. And that drives so much of what we deal with each and every day. We don't have crystal balls, but to the degree that we have the intelligence that we need to identify when Group A and B are feuding, we are somewhat effective at getting in front of some of that. But we unfortunately will never know when the first incident will happen, and it will kick off stuff. Sometimes, as you know, it could be as simple as something over a girl. Everybody thinks that sometimes when it's two drug dealers rivaling, it's always over drugs. Sometimes it is. But in many instances, it's reduced to young men who use gun violence as a means to resolve their conflict. And so we use methodologies like smart policing to map everything that's going on across the city. You know also, you both have some very dynamic captains in your areas in particular. We use footbeats. Everybody that comes out of the police academy walks a footbeat, and they typically are crime beats. And so they're not feel-good beats. They go in targets. In fact, we had the luxury of bringing them down last week from one of our particular districts, and they were shown an area that was really, I won't say crime-free, but to the degree that it could be. And you're showing new officers the impact that they're having, but also the ability to cultivate relationships, which is so, so important with us. In addition to that, we also try to work with other departments. You obviously all are familiar with YVRP, Youth Violence Reduction Program. In order to get in front of some of these young men in particular, who are already identified as being on probation, trying to keep them alive, that's just the bottom line. And so that's one of the things that has been helpful over the time. That is one of our intervention things that we work with. You may be familiar with the fact that we work with juvenile probation, and we have a juvenile enforcement team. These are police officers that work in conjunction with the probation department, and I know they're here today, Mr. Benny Price and his folks, to identify some of this juvenile violence that we're talking about, in an effort to stave off what, in many instances, is this retaliatory violence, which is what we deal with. But the biggest thing is just targeting these individuals, understanding that our big focus is to keep them alive. I mean, and it's sad to say, but this is what we have to do. But we don't stop at just the law enforcement efforts. We look at being preventive. You know, for example, of the ceasefire initiative that was going on in North Philadelphia. We have some people here from even that group in an effort to outreach. Look, we have to be real about certain things. We aren't always wearing this uniform, going to be able to say things that are going to resonate with young people, particularly young people who are inclined to resort to violence. But when you have people here like Terry Stark, who's back here today, who have been in this whole endeavor and this struggle with us, and these are the things that help us in this collaboration. So we're very confident about some of those things. But they need funding, and so I'm going to be honest about that. I mean, whether you're talking about this, or whether you're talking about what many of you are very, very supportive of in terms of focus deterrence, and I know, Councilman, you are well aware of that from South Philadelphia, but, and it actually works well down there. But all these programs are only as impactful as the services that come behind them. If you don't have the requisite service to follow them up, you can get these young men, you can threaten them, you can tell them that if their rival gang or their fellow gang member gets involved in a shooting, that this is what's going to happen. That's nice up to a point. But the next step has to be something that gets them to want to be out of that life. And if you only have something that's only a couple weeks in length, it's not really going to be enough. So I can't stress enough about the services and what that will provide. Also diversion. You know about our efforts in diversion. A lot of this was spearheaded by Deputy Bethel when he was here, but we continue that. Already this school year, we've had 339 kids that have been diverted and not put into the criminal justice system from school-related incidents. And that's important. It's important in terms of building relationships with young people, but we can't have people put in the system in the first place. That probably causes more issues than anything else. So to the degree that we're able to reduce that incidence of young people being put in our criminal justice system, diverting them has been a tremendous thing for us, and we're going to continue to do that. You know about the police athletically. We got to maintain these connections out there with young people, keeping them. It's not only about keeping them off the street, which most people identify with, but let's be honest, in this climate we're in with police-community relations, also have to do that. So we have to build these relationships, and that's critical. The bottom line is building these relationships, collaborating with people behind me, working in conjunction with our partners seated at the table as well, are all things that we need to do. But again, I thank you for having this forum, and I hope that we can continue to collaborate because we must do this to save these young men, because there's no other way we're going to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And this is not the first time, this is nothing new for you.
Unfortunately, no.
What we hope to do is take what you're talking about, codify it in a way that we can put resources to it. We want to reinforce what is working. We want to purge what is not. And in order to do that, we have to get testimony from folk like yourself
Absolutely.
...that are out there, boots on the ground, so that we can fund those things that have our opportunity to change them entirely. Why don't you stick around? We're going to hear from the entire panel, and then we'll ask questions if that's okay with the body. Thank you. Pull the mic to you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting the Department of Behavioral Health to present today. I'm here representing our Commissioner, Arthur Evans, as well as the work of the larger department. My name is Camilla Jackson. I'm a child, adolescent, and adult psychiatrist and Deputy Chief Medical Officer for Children's Services within the department. I want to thank you for recognizing this problem and bringing attention to it, particularly with regard to developing a comprehensive approach to the solution. We believe, as you all do, that gun violence is an urgent public health crisis nationally and certainly locally, and our department is committed to addressing this issue. We believe that a comprehensive strategy is required, focusing especially and particularly on prevention efforts to this problem. Our work is really with stakeholders here, as well as in the audience, and whom you'll hear from today. And we've really sort of grouped our comments today around specific areas, looking at building community resilience, responding to events when they do happen, both at the individual and community levels, and also fostering long-term recovery. I'd like to highlight a few of these initiatives. We again work with many of the folks in the room today, and you'll hear from them about their specific areas. Around the area of building resilience, a few of the initiatives we'd like to highlight are addressed around reducing the stigma of mental illness. Councilman Johnson mentioned that earlier today, and we know particularly from the resolution, that the high percentage of males, young males, African-American in particular, are involved in this issue, our population of whom it's difficult to address mental health issues with. So the department has been engaged with an Engaging Men of Color initiative. I think a few of you have been involved in that. Partners in the school district are also involved, where we really seek to enhance the awareness of behavioral health challenges experienced by males of color, and to enhance their service access, engagement, and treatment, often highlighting in particular a few local celebrities who've had their own struggles, to really try to engage this difficult-to-reach population. We've also worked through this initiative with partners at the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Services Center, with a series of monthly workshops and other areas of work to really partner and again engage this difficult-to-reach population. To date, EMOC has served over 2,500 people in the city, and the work continues. I'd also like to talk about our Mental Health First Aid Initiative. I know a number of folks here on council have also been engaged in that particular initiative, which is really helping Philadelphia emerge as a national leader in the public health promotion of behavioral health via Mental Health First Aid. We've partnered with folks here at the table, and the police department, with the school district of Philadelphia, with SEPTA, and the work currently, we've trained over 12,000 individuals in the city, which makes us number one in terms of cities across the country. The work continues particularly with the youth version of Mental Health First Aid, as well as targeting Spanish-language training. Around the area of building resilience, we also have a faith-based initiative. The Faith and Spiritual Affairs Initiative really again involves a public health approach to reaching individuals and families about the signs and symptoms of mental illness, and to really reduce the stigma for engaging in treatment. Now I'd like to focus on responding to incidents when they actually do happen. The department has partnered with one of the panelists later you'll hear from today in terms of hospital-based violence intervention programs. Often, individuals who've been violently injured have reported that while in the emergency department, their thoughts are to either change their way of life or to retaliate. So later this morning, you'll hear from Dr. Ted Corbin of the Healing Hurt People Program, which is through Drexel School of Public Health Center for Nonviolence and Social Justice. That initiative and program is really aimed at screening young people to assess their need for behavioral health services and other follow-up support services at that critical period of time after they've been injured. You'll also hear from another partner in this workshop's VIP program, and Dr. Joel Fine later today. Along the lines of responding to incidents, we also have developed a Violence and Trauma Response Network. Under the leadership of Phil DiMara, DBH IDS convenes the Victim Community Support Committee, whose goal is really to develop a coordinated interdisciplinary response process to ensure that the most appropriate services are available and provided to those most affected. Throughout 2015, committee member organizations have been responding to incidents of violence across the city in coordination with DBH IDS. And so those would be specific from the R-SAN reports, for example, about violent shootings across the city, and then mobilizing the community workforce to be able to intervene, particularly around some of the things mentioned earlier about folks in the community witnessing the aftermath of these effects. We also have community response teams that go out and provide emotional support to communities affected by disasters, emergencies, or other large-scale events. Around fostering long-term recovery, and that's the last piece that I'll cover today, we know from all the academicians in the world that childhood maltreatment is really a leading cause of high-risk behaviors, including delinquency and later adult criminal behavior and violent crime. The department has received funding through SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration, to develop a network of provider agencies who are specifically trained in evidence-based treatments for trauma for children and families across the city. This is our fourth year of this project, where we're training behavioral health agencies in this most robust model for intervening after disclosure of trauma has happened. To date, we've served over 7,000 children and adolescents with screening and assessment for trauma, and then about 1,000 in these specific evidence-based treatment models. We've really increased the number of trauma referrals as well through partnership with these victim community support groups, as well as with medical providers, the child welfare system, the school district of Philadelphia, and the juvenile justice system. I want to thank you for allowing me to talk about a few of these initiatives. Our full testimony is on the record, and we wholeheartedly look forward to helping support your efforts as you bring more community voices to this work and explore how we can reduce gun violence in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We're going to allow the three of you, then we're going to go in, because so much information has been given, and we have, yeah, so we want to be able to address questions where they're germane right away. So if you could, Mrs. Moses, put your testimony on the record, and we'll begin some questions, and then we'll bring up the second group to speak.
So good morning.
Good morning.
Both the Commissioner and Dr. Jackson have talked about the need for collaboration if we're going to be effective in reducing youth violence. I would like to point out that Philadelphia is well poised to accomplish things because of the excellent spirit of cooperation that exists here. And frankly, it doesn't exist everywhere, certainly in terms of my office's relationship with council. It's been a relationship that has been characterized by that spirit of collaboration, which has inured greatly to public safety in Philadelphia. So I want to thank you for having this in-depth examination of youth violence here in Philadelphia. My name is George Mosey. I'm the first assistant in the district attorney's office. Seth Williams wanted to be here today. Unfortunately, he's traveling, he's out of town, and he tried to change his schedule and tried to accommodate these hearings. It just didn't work out, and he asked me to appear instead. We all know about the traditional role of prosecutors in the criminal justice system, and I don't want to diminish the importance of that role, because certainly, I don't believe that we can have real change unless people are held accountable. And that's especially true when we're talking about young people. There was a time in the history of this city when young people were getting away with it. In fact, I think the phrase that they coined was, "We beat the case." And if kids beat the case, well, not only do they continue to do whatever it was that they did to get them into the system in the first place, but they tell all their friends. And so it's really important that we be effective in our traditional role. But it's interesting that But it's interesting that in order to really be effective, we have to be non-traditional in our approach. And in Philadelphia, I'm happy to say that the Philadelphia DA's office has created what I like to refer to as a continuum of prevention. And so certainly when you think about prosecutors, you don't think about them being involved in prevention, but who is better positioned to know what it is that people need to avoid the pitfalls of delinquent and criminal conduct than prosecutors? So in Philadelphia, for example, our district attorney has made it his personal mission to address bullying in schools. Bullying, of course, has its genesis and an attitude that I think we would all agree is at the heart of just about every kind of violence. And so he's been to 35 schools individually to address young people and to help them not just to recognize that it's wrong to bully, but to develop systems in those schools that will help any child who feels that they're being harassed. And these are crimes, by the way, to have a way to report it and a way to overcome it. One of the other things that we developed was a curriculum on juvenile justice and criminal justice. It actually educates young people about the justice system. And I think that does three things. First, it introduces them to potential means of employment. It also helps them to understand American jurisprudence, which is still the very best system on earth. But finally, it teaches them what the consequences of delinquent and criminal conduct are. It's interesting to me that, and this isn't to create a debate about the efficacy of mandatory minimum sentencing or what the sentence should be for a particular crime or sending young people to the adult system, but young people don't know about that stuff. And so whatever your position is regarding the law, it's a severe injustice to not use the law for what it was primarily designed to do, and that is to deter crime. But you can't hope to deter crime with the law if people don't know what the law is. So we developed this curriculum to be taught to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to expose them to the system and to teach them about what the consequences will be if they make the wrong choices. One of our other prevention programs that I think is really at the heart of so much that's happening in Philadelphia today that's gone awry is our truancy prevention program. On any given day, I'm told that almost 50% of our young people are not in school. And I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to recognize that when they're not in school, they're not doing the right thing. And if they're not doing the right thing at that point and it's not being confronted, they're not being held accountable, no one is compelling them to go to school, then it's creating a scenario where they're learning to do the wrong things. We've talked about homicides, and I think, you know, it's certainly important to emphasize that people are being killed in Philadelphia at a rate that is just unacceptable. One would be unacceptable, but the 280 that died last year is really just unacceptable. 280 is a large number. We can compare it to prior years and say that the number is down, but we shouldn't rest on our laws in that regard. But forget about the homicides for a minute. Think about the shootings, which is what you pointed out, Councilman Johnson. 1,200 people were shot in this city last year. That's, you know, my math isn't that good, otherwise I'd be a doctor. But that's three people a day being shot in this city. And but for the fact that we have these excellent emergency centers and these wonderful hospitals that we have, the number would be even greater. And so we have to do something about the proliferation of the illegal possession of firearms. And my office, through Seth Williams' initiatives, has made firearm possession, the illegal possession of firearms, a top priority. We created what's called Gun Stat, which is very similar to the ComStat process that's used by the Philadelphia Police Department. And through Gun Stat, we hold our people accountable for the way that they prosecute gun-related crime, whether that's possession of a firearm or an armed robbery. We bring those cases before the entire command staff of the DA's office, and we analyze the way those cases were handled so that we can do it better. And so we're trying to reduce the number of shootings by doing something about the guns on the street. We also need to do something about the people who would perpetrate these crimes. And the Commissioner talked about the Youth Violence Reduction Partnership. Commissioner Johnson, you know about focused deterrents. And I have some people who are really expert in focused deterrents who are here today. They'll be participating on some subsequent panels, so I'm going to leave the details to them. But these are efforts to address the individuals and the groups who would perpetrate firearm-related violence. The Youth Violence Reduction Partnership, another excellent example of collaboration between the police department, adult and juvenile probation. And just an interesting side note, although for juvenile justice purposes, a juvenile is someone between the ages of 10 through 17. We've taken it upon ourselves to view anyone up to the age of 25 as a youth for purposes of the Youth Violence Reduction Partnership. And that was well in advance of the science related to adolescent brain development. We're trying to keep those young men alive and making sure that they don't kill somebody before they reach the age of 25. The statistics bear out that if we can keep them alive until 25, then chances are they'll be around with us for the duration. The collaborative effort involves actually going out to visit their homes with that tandem of a police officer, someone from juvenile probation or adult probation, and a member of the Philadelphia Anti-Drug Anti-Violence Network. Mr. Brown is here, he's the executive director, and I hope you'll have an opportunity to hear from him later on. So I could go on and on, as I'm sure you can tell. Just want to emphasize to the committee that the Philadelphia DA's office is more than willing to continue to be an active collaborator and that we recognize that it's more than just our traditional role. We have to do things that actually get to the root of the problem. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for testifying today. A couple of quick questions, and I know my partner Johnson is going to have a lot of questions for you. Couple of things. Number one, as I listen to, I have an opportunity to hear and be in different rooms. I've been in the District Attorney's Office, I've been a part of focused deterrent, I've been a part of some of the different collaborations that will be heard from today. One of two things strikes me as a problem. One, are we putting enough resources, dollars, into these programs so that they trickle down and become effective? And B, who knows about them? A part of our problem is the average person in the street, whether you are a victim of crime, whether you are a potential person that wants to get out of that life, doesn't know what those pathways out are. And I wanted to know, is it that they don't know that these things exist or there's not enough resources to go around to do that? Particularly, as I've heard your testimony, on a trauma team. Critical in the first 24 hours, first couple of hours, that a trauma team needs to be on the ground dealing with condolences, of course, but also the potential for retaliation. Because if it's going, like, some of this stuff is generational. Like, not since the Hatfields and McCoys have families grown up in the same community, gone to the same schools, shopped at the same grocery markets, and that issue of my nephew, your nephew, your son, my daughter, that's a constant reminder and boiling pot for, and how do we address that issue? You're talking about blocks separating perpetrator from a victim.
You want to deal with it?
Yeah, I'll start. I think it's probably both. I know you've heard from Dr. Evans before during his testimony, and our resources in terms of the department are particularly bucketed around treatment once things happen. And so Mr. Mosi spoke earlier about pushing yourselves. And I think as a department, under Dr. Evans's leadership, we really pushed ourselves to move beyond waiting for something to happen and for someone to end up in an emergency room or in an actual office because we know there are lots of issues that keep them from actually coming to the treatment resources that we have and that we're working on intentionally to develop more robustly. And so these partnership efforts are things that I think resource-wise, we're really pushing the envelope in terms of the community connectedness with the agencies that I talked about before and the leadership of the part of the department who works with the Office of Emergency Management to make sure that that happens more systemically across the city. So that's a resource question for sure in terms of how much of our bucket is dedicated towards prevention efforts and not intervention once something actually happens. I do think the issue, however, of awareness, community awareness, is incredibly important. And that's why some of our initiatives around Mental Health First Aid, Engaging Men of Color, again, opportunities to get out front to people before you even think about a behavioral health treatment needed to actually get into the community through faith communities, schools, et cetera, so that we're not waiting for, again, something to happen before we get there. But there's still more work to be done because it sounds like in terms of letting people know in Philadelphia about the robust partnership efforts that are happening and that they can avail themselves of, there's still room to go.
So we're going to have a budget hearing starting this week. What I'm going to need you to do, and you're going to hear this question come from me again. What is it that you do that is impactful? How much does it cost and how much more to be more impactful? How much does it, how much does good cost? How much more do you need to be better at it? And that's a bold statement coming from someone that has to speak for their department. But I'm going to need you to be forthright with us so that we can do the right thing. All right? You don't have to answer it now. You can go back.
Dr. Evans will be answering it.
But we're going to drag that out of you. All right?
I certainly seized this opportunity to say that many of the wonderful things that I've talked about, that the District Attorney's Office has implemented and continues to do have been by virtue of in-kind contributions. We've started diversion programs that have inured to the cost-effectiveness of this city and the criminal justice system, and there's been no return. So it's come to the point where we need a return on that investment. And so rest assured that we will come armed with the details.
Yeah, data-driven is better for us. We have some council people that know how to count pennies, but a life is priceless to us. I want you to know, it's okay that doing better means costing. And we're okay with cost accounting. We're going to be okay with that.
Just so very briefly, you mentioned the returning citizens, and you just very briefly touched on that. And we have to provide a gateway for people coming back because if you don't have some avenue for them to get gainful employment, then it's going to be, the cycle's going to repeat itself. So irrespective of where that lies, that funding and everything else, but it's a real issue because there are people, whether you're conservative, moderate, or liberal, whether you believe in redemption or you just believe in practicality of what will people do, this is something we got to deal with. And lastly, and it's kind of like a total pivot away from this, but, you know, you talk about what do people know? And one of the things you pushed us to was this, you know, decentralized cadet or explorer program. And so initially, we didn't do a good job of letting people know we had done that. And so we had some districts that did not. And these, all these things dovetail into one another. I mean, there's no denying that if you don't have some connectivity where people understand how you get young people out of an issue, how you get them connecting with police, how you get them on the track and the mindset of understanding how they become productive members of society, you're going to have a problem. So we have some work to do in the police department with regard to outlining some of our things that we do, even that we do well, we don't necessarily tell people about.
We appreciate you hearing us, and we hear you. It's a two-way conversation. Like, when you tell us that you need, we hear you. And we try to address that financial need. And we appreciate when we say to you, we would like to have more services, and you respond to us. That's how, that's how government works best together.
Absolutely.
I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, but I'm going to ask you a question. The other thing is communicating to the public, to the young people in languages they understand. So I'm going to ask a question, I don't need you to, if you know the answer, speak up. If you don't, don't pressure yourself. Does anyone at this panel know what a crash dummy is? Now I'm going to leave that there because somebody in the audience is going to let you know what that is. If we cannot speak their language, we cannot relate to them in a meaningful way that they understand that you're there for them. So your homework assignment is find out what a crash dummy is. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Crash dummy. That still flew over the top, but I'm working on it. Just a couple of questions. So for Mr. Mosi regarding the District Attorney's Office, give me an overview again of, and I'm going to come from the law enforcement perspective first because my first and foremost priority is to keep my constituents safe. And that safety revolves around the level of guns that are flooding the streets of Philadelphia. I always like to say there are no gun factories in Point Breeze, there's no gun factories in Strawberry Mansion, and there surely aren't any gun factories in Winfield. And so these guns are coming from somewhere. We know there's a challenge to address the public policy and laws on a state level, so we do the best that we can do on a city level, such as going after straw purchasers. Give me an overview of where we stand in terms of Gun Stat. I know there was a gun court, particularly at one point in time that specifically focused on when a young person is arrested for carrying a gun, this is the court that they would go to and they would be addressed for carrying a handgun or in some cases, an assault rifle. Where are we, particularly in that area? And then also, give me an overview of how many juveniles are certified as adults for shootings, homicides.
So this is like the multi-state exam with the multiple point questions. Okay.
That's why we're here, though.
So... So let me start with the last question. Certification is the process by which a prosecutor proactively pursues the transfer of a juvenile to adult court. And what you have to demonstrate is that they're no longer amenable to treatment as a juvenile. In Pennsylvania, we have a law which causes the young person to begin an adult court, and that's called direct file. If a crime is committed that involves a deadly weapon, and it's a crime of violence, and it's perpetrated by someone who is 15 years or older, their case automatically starts in the adult system. All right? And so when I look up that word, you guys can look up direct file, okay? Because that's part of the problem that I was talking about earlier, that young people don't know that. And so some old head can come up to them and say, "Look, we want you to be the lookout. You stand outside, we're going in the store, take down the corner store." Old head has, you know, his Tech 9, he pulls it out. They get all the money, they walk down the street, they all get arrested. That juvenile, the 15-year-old who was just a lookout, is going to have his case start in adult court. And that's after the old head said, "Don't worry about it, nothing's going to happen to you." You get a slap on the wrist.
So now you know what a crash dummy is. That's what they call them. They say, "Listen, young boy, go do this, you're not going to get adult time, you'll be out in two years." And they do it, they perpetrate that crime, and then they wind up with a life sentence. And when they realize it, they realize the dummy that they were. And so they sell them this pipe dream that you're not going to be impacted as an adult. That's what a crash dummy is.
And that's the extension of the scenario because the next part is that the old head goes in the store and the store owner has a gun of his own. Store owner pulls out his gun, old head shoots him and kills him. Now everybody who was involved is looking at life. And so there's a whole lot of publicity right now about changes coming down from the Supreme Court. But what people are missing is that life in prison is still an option for juveniles. And in terms of the ages that I was talking about earlier, age means nothing when somebody dies. The case starts in the adult system whether you're 18 or eight. So, you know, there are dire consequences. The numbers have dropped tremendously. And one of the best-kept secrets in Philadelphia right now is that the number of juvenile petitions has dropped from... has dropped from 10,000 in 2003 when I was the deputy for the Juvenile Division to fewer than 2,500 in 2015. So that's a 75% decrease. And you might say, well, those are the cases that stay in juvenile court. Likewise, there's been a tremendous decrease in the number of direct file cases. So we were doing about 1,000 per year back in 2003, and last year we didn't break 300. And those are the cases that start in the adult system. We actually review those cases and make a determination as to whether or not the young person is still amenable to treatment in the juvenile justice system. And so even some of those cases come back. So those numbers have been greatly reduced.
So I want to recognize for the record that Councilman Green is here and Councilwoman Blackwell has joined us as well.
Can you elaborate on gun stat, please, and going after straw purchasers as well?
Yep. And so in addition to gun stat, my office in collaboration with the Attorney General's Office has a Gun Violence Task Force. And the gun violence-
How was that coming along? Because I remember when it first kicked off and haven't heard too much as of lately. So yeah, give us an update on that Gun Violence Task Force.
So they're still doing what they do, which is to investigate to find out where the gun is coming from. And you know, I really appreciated what you said about no guns being manufactured in Philadelphia. In fact, no guns are manufactured in Pennsylvania. I used to prosecute cases in federal court, and there you have to establish that there's an interstate nexus in order to have jurisdiction. All I had to say was, Your Honor, this is a gun case and it occurred in Pennsylvania. I had my nexus because that gun had to come from out of state. So the Gun Violence Task Force actually does it the right way. When somebody is caught with a gun, they speak to them. We do what's called a proffer. So the information won't be held against them, but we get information about where it is that they got the gun. We go into homes at the request of parents to find guns that they know have been brought into the home by their children. We do all those things primarily to get the guns off the street.
Can we go back? I don't want to, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that's something very critical that was just mentioned when you talk about the parent. Because just on the personal responsibility component, parents have a right to look under the bed of their children. Parents have a right to look inside their cars. And I always often tell folks, and sometime I get looked at cockeyed in the neighborhood in which I grew on up in, but I have to have a real conversation. Half of these homicides and shootings that happen, a lot of times we know who did it, why they did it, what corner was going to war, what corner. And then I usually get a phone call from, you know, somebody saying, here's the overview of what's going on. And from a prevention side, that parent can't co-sign kid, the young man and their friends hiding the guns downstairs in the home when they know there's something else going on besides you just hanging out with, your children is hanging out with a bunch of young men. At least that's the era I grew up in. But go ahead.
And so I'm still very much encouraged by the work of the Gun Violence Task Force.
So we're going to go with Councilwoman-
I still have just one last question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just one last question regarding mental health and Department Behavioral Health, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Because if we had not had this particular hearing, I would not have known Department Behavioral Health engaged in all these different programs that address the issue of youth gun violence. In one part that Councilman Curtis Jones talked about, which is critical, is the retaliation component. Being in a hospital room where people are gathering after the homicide or the shooting takes place, because that's normally when the planning takes place on how you're going to retaliate. People are emotional, temperatures are flaring, and that's usually where the plan is, okay, we're going to go and retaliate. And I had no idea we had this program. So when you do come back for the budget process, how can we intertwine your program with the other agencies? Because that intervention component is something that should be shared. The information, it should be a part of if the DA's office is meeting with the Philadelphia Police Department, some type of connection. But when you talk about also mental health, are we addressing it also to issue of drug, drug addiction? It's common knowledge on a street level that a lot of young men who do carry the guns, they smoke what you call what? PCP. So they're out of their minds and they don't have a problem riding up on a bicycle, you know, doing a brazen crime or shooting in public. I remember one shooting took place 20th and Federal, the police station right there on South, police station's at 20th and Federal. So how can somebody actually get out of a car and have a shootout, police station, fire station right there without no regard that nobody's going to even think about catching you? But there is a mental health component regarding drug addiction, whether it's smoking wet, whether it's, you know, drinking syrup, whether it's taking pills, that kind of play a role where young people self-medicate and don't have a problem going out and shooting someone. Is that a, a issue that's being addressed from Department Behavioral Health or a role that should be taken a look at as it relates to youth gun violence?
Absolutely. I think that's a very important observation about the challenges. I just focused on a few of the initiatives today, but obviously there's a whole arm of our department. We're focused on substance abuse challenges and substance use disorders as well. In terms of the partnership work, I know that you're going to hear later from Healing Hurt People, that program in particular that our department supports. And I think on the ground, to the point that was made a little bit earlier in the panel, on the ground, I think a lot of these relationships exist between the police and those programs as people go into emergency departments, et cetera. But I think your comment about how we bring broader community awareness to these issues is a very important one.
So we want you to put a price tag on it. If, if the federal government takes Taliban youth and sends them to reeducation programs, then some of our kids have been traumatized in a similar way. They bought into this false kind of crash dummy system that we need to let them know the realities and ways halfway's out. So we need to know what that costs. All right? I'm going to recognize Councilwoman Jim.
Jim, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you very much to my colleague, Councilman Johnson, for raising such an important issue. A lot of my questions are going to focus a little bit on this unique psychology of young people. I think that there is something very specific about what's going on. I mean, in part, we're having this hearing to focus specifically on youth because we recognize that youth are fundamentally different from adults in terms of how their brain develops, how they react to trauma, how they react to stress, and what procedures that we're trying to learn about it so that we can handle situations better. So my first question is for Commissioner Ross and to ask a little bit about the fact that young people and, you know, the Department of Justice has done a number of retaliatory intervention. We've got lots of psychologists and, and trauma experts who talk about young men in particular who are victims of violence, are, are victims of repeated violence, repeated assaults, that if you're shot once, you're likely to be injured on multiple occasions. And I'm interested in how police procedure with interaction with juveniles in particular has evolved and changed. In particular, because it seems that the more aggressive that a police response would be to juveniles, the more likely that you could trigger more aggressive reactions in juveniles. So that there needs to be a fundamentally different way in which we handle young men and particularly juveniles in particular, so that we're, we're de-escalating constantly as opposed to immediately going in with traditional police procedures. So could you just talk about how police procedure is altering in response to better understanding about juvenile development?
Sure. And I, I think the, the best way to talk about that is, is with respect to what we do with diversion in the schools. And, and there's a significant difference in how we respond to young people. For example, when, when I gave the stat about the number of people who were diverted so far this year, over the last couple of years, we've diverted a significant number of juveniles largely because of the recognition that juveniles were being arrested for minor crimes where we could have otherwise treated them differently. We get the call from the school district, we show up. And I'll give you a very particular example that didn't just involve us, it involved climate and safety. And so in many instances, what was happening is child A and B get in a fight, someone in the position of authority intervenes, and then they get assaulted. And so now that young person gets a case for something that really, their intent was not even to assault that faculty member or that security member. And so there was a recognition and a realization that rather than in cases like this, put a case on a young child, let's divert this child. Even in cases of minor instances of small weapons on school property, small amounts of marijuana, all these things not only go a long way towards reduces, reducing the incidence of kids in the justice system, but in how they relate to us and realizing that our sole intent is not to put people in the criminal justice system. And so I think that's a major demarcation from what we were doing. I can't get into the psychology part of it, but just in terms of its practicality, that's one of the things that I think is proving most fruitful for what we've been doing in our interaction at this stage.
So if I could direct my question a little bit more clearer, I think that I'm, I'm very interested in this issue of trauma, stress, and gun violence. So the moment when the shooting happens, either you have victims or, you know, juveniles in the area. And I think, first of all, I'd like to express praise for your diversion program. I think it's been a model program and I, I really am very hopeful about it and would love to see if you wanted to expand that. But I'm particularly interested in whether the police department is altering its procedure in its handling of juveniles at the point of highest stress. And this is, this is where you're saying that juveniles are very quick to make rash decisions, they're not thinking it through. A violent incident has happened, they're going with people that they instinctively trust to, to, to respond to what they are experiencing, which is also under, being, you know, filtered through massive stress and other types of factors. And at that point, I guess I'm wondering, is the police department altering its procedures on how it interacts with juveniles there? I mean, there's some evidence to indicate that, like the Department of Justice's retaliatory intervention program is looking at moments of de-escalation, trying to solve problems, trying to reassure juveniles that they are going to have this crime solved as opposed to immediately sweeping up interrogations and that kind of process. So I'm, I'm wondering if you can speak to this issue of the point of highest stress and how the police department procedures are evolving to take in account juvenile brain development and, and psychology.
Well, to be candid with you, Councilwoman, we, we haven't gotten that far in terms of breaking it down for juvenile. I mean, so I, I'm not in a position to answer that right now with regard to how we deal with the psychology of the shooting and the trauma that is resulting from that. So obviously it's something we're going to have to work on with regard to the Justice Department study that you're referring to.
I'm, I'm just curious because, you know, you do say that a lot of juvenile violence is triggered by retaliation.
Oh, a lot of violence, period.
Period.
Yeah.
And that in particular retaliation is a relatively, I mean, it can be long-term obviously, but there can be rapid-fire retaliation that happens. And it's just an area where I'm interested in whether the, the police department in particular is looking at that and the de-escalation of engagement with young men in particular, so it doesn't just keep ramping up the aggression.
Right. And, and this still may not cover your question, but I think some of what focused deterrence looks to do is to deal with issues like that. When, when they call these young people in and they talk about not only the ramifications of committing further violence, but what it causes in the particular neighborhood. But I can't honestly say that we have a particular program other than that that deals with the type of trauma that you're talking about with juveniles.
Do you have a different, do you have a different procedure at which point the police interact with juveniles versus adults in terms of when a gun violence incident happens?
It's, it's not anything pointed like you're suggesting. I mean, we, we just try to stave off as much of this violence as we can. A lot of it is not just germane to gun violence. And this is why we have programs like the Police Athletic League, why we have programs like the Police Explorers Program. We try to connect with juveniles in as many ways as we possibly can. Some of them have nothing necessarily to do with gun violence. They have to do with just criminality and just connecting with young people as a whole. So, but again, I can't honestly say that we're doing a program that is as structured as you're describing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Jackson, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about, you know, we've been working a lot to try and bring a more holistic trauma-informed care model and crisis response plan to the school district of Philadelphia. As you may or may not know, you know, an incident can happen in a school and it can go all the way from like the most perfect response you've ever seen to being completely ignored. There's not really a consistent level of approach towards dealing with crisis and not man, you know, natural disasters or terrorist attacks, but genuine crises that are likely to happen in schools. So in terms of like trauma-informed care, we're bringing a community schools approach to Philadelphia public schools. The city is advancing on it. Could you talk a little bit from a behavioral health perspective about what types of partnerships you think would be ideal to make sure that a community schools approach dealt with a more trauma-informed model, particularly involved grief counseling, which I think is just tragically overlooked for perpetrators, victims, anyone who experiences gun violence. I'm just constantly stunned that we don't provide grief counseling and support services to young people in trauma. And then, and other types of areas where you think that the community schools approach would help bring a more behaviorally, you know, DBH and mentally, mental health-informed approach towards schooling?
I can actually speak a little bit about what's happening now with regard to some of the major crises that are happening that affect school-involved kids. Karen Lynch, I know, is coming a little bit later and so can talk a little bit about that. But there's, there's an established relationship at this point where one of our consultants in the department, Dr. Stephen Berkowitz, who's a local trauma expert and has developed some trauma-informed care models, has worked with Karen's office in the school district to look at the crisis protocol that currently exists for deploying resources in the event of a crisis. One of the things that happens now is that our department does provide support in the immediate aftermath in terms of post-vention support. So the, the school district central office has their own command team with their psychologists involved. And if they need some additional resources, they'll reach out to our department. And we coordinate with our provider network, particularly ones involved in that community and so maybe more familiar with kids and families in that community to provide onsite, on-ground support. Some of the things that were mentioned earlier in terms of how do you break the news to classrooms of students, how best to be trauma-informed in that work to really take care of, to pay attention to relationships and making sure that people who are closest to kids are the ones involved in providing the most immediate support and ongoing support for any needs that may arise, and then letting people know about resources. I think one of the things that happens is in the immediate aftermath, it's hard to think about mental health. But that's when people, we want people to be thinking about it because we know in that immediate period of acute stress, we have some opportunities to actually prevent post-traumatic stress from developing. And that's when we can provide some support. But it's really important to work with people who are directly involved with the young people so that we're not seen as this sort of random outside person who has no idea what's going on. We're actually partnering with adults in their lives that they trust and they care about how they help them navigate through resources. So I think there is an opportunity with the new resources that are going to be deployed within schools to have. I think one thing that's important is consistency in approach. So where these programs exist to make sure that they're working from a similar model in terms of how they provide support while tailoring it to specific communities that they're working with because we know there, there are different nuances with different communities.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The kid that's in the funeral that's passed out on the floor, I don't worry about as much. The one that's real quiet, sitting in the back simmering is the one that we, that needs that mental health. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Chairman Jones. I want to thank you for having this important conversation about coming up with a comprehensive strategy for reducing gun violence. Mr. Mosley, I know from your experience in being in DA's office, I want you to talk a little about, a little bit about The Choice is Yours. I've been having hearings and talking in a conversation, opportunity of using public-private partnership through social impact bonds to provide additional funding for The Choice is Yours. From my understanding, that program's had about 187 participants since 2012, and I think you've had an investment from both Lenfest Foundation and William Penn, about a million dollars. And if you had additional funding, and that's something I've been talking about through the upcoming budget process, you probably could ramp that up to get many more people in that program. My question, I think Chairman Jones raised a good point about resources. The question is, if someone wants to go through that program, would they be eligible to go through that program if they had any type of VUFA or gun violations to go through The Choice is Yours?
One of the things that we try to do is look at each case individually. And right now, I don't believe that we've drawn any lines of demarcation that would preclude somebody with a particular charge from coming in. It would depend on the facts surrounding that charge. But the point that you make about, you know, the resources actually driving our ability to provide this wonderful- to provide this wonderful program to people who really need it is right on point. The more money we have, the more people could get involved in. And for those of you who don't know, this is an opportunity to go to school, to go to college, in fact, or higher education, as opposed to, um, being dealt with by way of some criminal justice consequence.
And could you, I guess for the record, kind of explain the nature of the program? I mean, I have a lot of knowledge about the program, but for the record, could you kind of explain the program so for some people in the audience who may not be aware of it?
It's a proposition that's actually presented to someone who, in fact, committed a crime, that you can either, uh, deal with the consequences in a traditional way, by way of probation or even incarceration, or you can commit to pursue higher education. That means college or, um, some professional training, vocational or otherwise. You make that commitment and you stick with it, then you've actually paid your debt to society while, uh, having the benefit inured to you.
Okay. Uh, and so my understanding, the, the cost for The Choice Is Yours is about fifty-two-hundred per, per, um, participant, whereas being on, you know, being a state road, if you're doing counting time, is about thirty-five thousand a year. Is that correct?
And that's that cost effectiveness that I was talking about earlier. It just makes all the sense in the world, not just from, uh, behavioral health and, um, rehabilitation, but also in terms of the dollars and the cents.
And so, right, so you would, if you had additional resources, it would be feasible to be able to ramp this program up in the course of a year or two years to two-hundred-and-fifty or maybe five-hundred participants per year?
And the increase, of course, would have to be commensurate with the additional funding.
Right, okay. Um, one other question I have, and this is, um, actually came up from, uh, Councilman Johnson in reference to, uh, behavioral health being here in the conversation. And too often, we're in these silos where it's often public sec- public safety and we're dealing with DA's office, police department, public defender's office, First Judicial District, and some of the other entities are not involved. That's why I'm very happy to see that behavioral health has been involved in the conversation. But has there been any conversation or thought about reaching out to other agencies, especially entities like Commerce or Economic Development? Um, one of my perspectives is that, um, one issue that impacts, um, youth violence is lack of economic opportunity and lack of job opportunities or entrepreneurial opportunity. Has there been conversations to talk about how we could bring, um, partners into this conversation that are talking about entrepreneurship, economic development, and providing people, young people, a opportunity like The Choice Is Yours, but from a economic opportunity perspective or entrepreneurial perspective to try to see a different path than the path they're currently on?
Just want to say, I think that's an excellent point. I think if we had, uh, more opportunities for, uh, completing education and employment opportunities, we probably wouldn't be here today. Um, so, uh, I can't, there are not any specific initiatives that I can point to. Um, through our work engaging young people, we have a youth advisory board, for example, for the department, as well as for the trauma grant, um, that we have. We certainly encourage those opportunities, but in terms of specific partnerships with commerce agencies, I'm not aware, um, of any.
Okay. Well, I would definitely encourage, um, both, um, the members of this body and also you, as you're putting together a strategy, make sure you're reaching out to the African-American chambers, some of the ethnic chambers, the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce, as well as with Harold F. from the Commerce Department and administration, and really talk about a more holistic perspective and how we can provide opportunity for some of the young people or persons coming through The Choice Is Yours or other, or other programs to really see potential entrepreneurship opportunities or job opportunities, because I think that's something that's missing from the conversation.
That's a great point.
Thank you. Councilman Tottenberger?
Thank you. Panel, I, I thank you very much for sharing your collective wisdom with us because we, we truly need this. Mr. Mosi, with the, with the District Attorney's Office, we received a briefing, uh, I think it was in February, all the new council members. And at that time, a statistic was cited. Correct me if I got that right, or that at any time, about fifty percent of the school district's kids are not in class. Is that about accurate? I mean, I'm not gonna haggle over numbers.
Yeah, that's the statistic I quoted earlier, and that's what I've been told.
Okay. Then the question I have, we, we were briefed, actually, on a program that the District Attorney has, that has not been fully accepted or embraced by the school district. Is there any way, as a city council, we could get that moving? It seemed to make sense to me at the date of the briefing.
Uh, we would very much like to have the opportunity to implement our program in the Philadelphia public schools. Right now, we are doing, I think, what's amounted to a really effective job of curbing truancy in the charter schools in the city. And every school where we've implemented the program, there's been at least a seventy-five percent increase in attendance. Uh, one of the things that's been holding, uh, the implementation of this program in the public schools has been their, um, perceived inability to share the relevant information necessary for us to be effective regarding truancy with us.
Oh, really? Okay. I understand, uh, through my colleague, Councilman Green, that Karen Lynch is in the room in regards to the question I just asked. Is that, is she here? If she could just answer the question that I should ask, Mr. Mosi, regarding the implementation of this program in the school district.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Karen Lynch. I'm Chief of Student Support Services with the School District of Philadelphia. I believe the question that you asked was about the truancy program that the District Attorney is interested in implementing in the school district.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, the School District of Philadelphia has tried on numerous occasions, um, and met with, uh, um, uh, District Attorney on at least two occasions to talk about this very program. What we have shared with him, um, and the, it's, it's not the school district that has decided this, it is, in fact, the federal government, FERPA, that speaks to the sharing of information with, um, non-educational entities. And so, um, on behalf of the District Attorney and for this, um, particular reason, we actually sent an opinion and urged him to seek an opinion from the federal government on this very topic, and it was said that we can definitely, absolutely, share names and addresses of students, um, uh, it's considered to be directory information. That information can absolutely be shared, and we've offered to do that. That information can be used to send letters to families across the city and let them know about truancy, um, the importance of their children attending school. We're very eager for the District Attorney to participate in this effort. What we cannot share is the student-specific information beyond directory information. Uh, name, address, we can share. The exact truancy numbers, we cannot share. What the District Attorney has said is that he would like to have not just the names, not just the addresses, not just the phone numbers of students and families, but he would also like to have the, the, the child-specific information on truancy. Um, and we've asked repeatedly, is there any other way we can go about this? Can we send the letters for you? Um, can we jointly send a request to the federal government? What can we do? And, um, thus far, there hasn't been a solution that's been reached.
Well, one, is it possible to have some of that correspondence sent to the panel?
Say again?
Is it possible to have? You said you had correspondence with it, with the District Attorney's Office.
To see the correspondence?
Yes. The requests that you made. I mean, i- if it's possible, if it's not, then...
Is it possible to see the correspond-
Just a point of, point of information. And so what, what my colleague is referring to, we are officially requesting from the School District of Philadelphia and the District Attorney's Office to turn over the correspondence between the School District of Philadelphia and the District Attorney's Office regarding this particular issue.
That is correct, Councilman?
Sure.
So that's official request for the record.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chairman. Because let me be very direct in, in hearing what I have just heard, that if charter schools can do this, and there is a seventy-five percent increase in attendance, that's a good thing.
So, I, I can't speak to the seventy-five percent increase in attendance, I've not heard this before. Um, I do know that there are several charter schools that have participated in this effort. There are, I, I, and I can't speak to whether or not the charter schools are, um, in violation of the FERPA Act or not. Um, I can tell you that I have, um, had correspondence with the federal government where we have asked, can we do this specifically? And they have said, no, you cannot do this specifically.
Well, we'd like to see that as well.
Absolutely. I've not had any correspondence where I have asked about charter schools or, or what they can or cannot do, and, but I'm curious how they do that as well.
I mean, one, half of taxpayers and the residents of the City of Philadelphia, where half our children are, at any given day, are not attending school, is a major Herculean problem. There's something wrong with the system.
So I, I would also share with you that I have never heard that fa- that, um, uh, data point either, that half the children in the City of Philadelphia are, um, in the Phil- in the School District of Philadelphia are not attending schools. That was, um, a new information point to me. I can share with you that, in fact, in the last year, um, our attendance has increased and our, um, truancy has decreased. I can also share that we are not just-
And if I could ask, what is it? What are those numbers then?
I'm sorry?
What are, what are the, the, the exact numbers then? I mean, if, if, or approximately, I don't need the exact numbers, but pretty close to, how many children, what percentage of, of the school district children are in school this very moment? Approximately.
So the way that we track the data is the numbers of children that are attending, um, school, um, a, a percentage of the one-hundred-and-eighty-five days, and that number is closer to ninety percent. And if you will, I can share with you over the, and have sent to your offices, um, the information, the trending information on attendance in the district that has taken place thus far. I can also talk with you today about several of the initiatives that we have underway, um, both, uh, practices that have been known to be successful. We've partnered over the last year, as a matter of fact, with Harvard, where we're sending to fam-
Can we save, excuse me, if you don't mind respectfully?
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilman Tottenberger, separate from the question, um, during your time on the panel, then you can just roll out the best practices that you're working on with the district. Is that okay?
Okay.
Is that okay?
That'll be fine. That, that is fine. I, I do have one more question, actually, not, not for you, but for the panel and possibly Commissioner Ross, if he could answer this question. Hopefully, it goes quickly. When, 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 and when a shooting occurs, how often is the gun, uh, also captured as well? I mean, if, if there's an arrest made, how often is the gun also brought in as police evidence?
Uh, Ms. Lynch?
Good question, and then there's no percentage I can provide you on that, because sometimes what happens, that gun might not be recovered initially. It may be recovered at some point where through our information systems, where you're matching up guns that are subsequently recovered. Some of these guns are used in multiple shootings, as you might imagine, so that I don't think there's any hard and fast data that says that they are recovered in, in X percentage of times. Uh, not nearly as much as we'd like to see them, to be honest with you. It's, it's certainly not probably as frequent as people would believe.
And, and when it is brought forward as evidence, wh- what are the chances to actually then track that gun to see how it got in the hands of the shooter?
Well, I thought you were gonna ask about the incident, but the shooter itself, it, that just is dependent upon the investigation and how adept the investigator may or may not be in getting a confession, because some of that information will only be gleaned from someone admitting that this is how they got the gun themselves. Now, if you're talking about how the gun was tracked to a particular crime, we're able to do that through our crime information systems and where we're able to track shell casings and, uh, ballistic evidence back to a particular gun, assuming it's ever recovered. Obviously, every gun is test-fired. When that happens, there are scientific ways in which you can connect guns to a particular crime, but in terms of how an individual got the gun, that's not always that easy. It only, most of the time, it comes down to either a statement by a witness or usually a suspect to tell you how they got it. That does happen on occasion, but that's the only way you can really determine it.
Commissioner, thank you very much. Thank you all.
So we're gonna move on to, to the next panel, but, Mr. Mosi, can you stick around? Because I know, I know Councilman Green had a follow-up question regarding yourself and Ms.-
May I ask a question?
Ms. Karen Lynch? Oh, sure. Councilman Janie Blackwell.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I wanted certainly to commend you all, and, you know, we've been very, uh, excited about the program that, uh, Commissioner, you had Kevin Bethel do, uh, start with, uh, expungements, and I wanted to ask you about that status and about the status of programs, um, where they have probation officers in schools for kids who have records so we don't lose them that way as well.
So, with regard to the diversion that, Deputy Bethel, your buddy-
Yes, yes.
And he's doing well. Uh, yeah, we, over the last couple of years, there's been over eight-hundred or something kids that have been diverted, and, and that's this school year, uh, three-hundred-and-thirty-something, and, and we are very optimistic about that program in particular. As far as the probation officers, I don't know if Karen Lynch is able to speak to that or if you're aware of what they're doing.
That's true, sir.
Okay. I don't know if I'm, well, I don't, I'm not at liberty to call somebody else up, but we do have juvenile probation here who could better speak to that, Councilwoman, than, than I could.
Yeah, we just wanted to, even if not today, I won't hold the hearing up, but somebody could let us know, because in those schools, I assume, where we have more crime than others, if we, if they can check in there, then they don't have to lose time from school, or we get them easier if we can get them where they are to make sure they check in as they have to by law.
That's right.
So, so we were interested in that. I had one more thing. I'm trying to think of it real quick. Um, well, it's gone for the moment, but thank you all. I just remembered, you know, we're still working on that issue with Juvenile Justice Center that we've been talking about, trying to keep children here, so I'll stay in touch with you about that.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell. So, wanted to thank all of you for your testimony, and just one last information I'm gonna request, Commissioner Ross, can you have your team put together numbers for me for the Youth Violence Reduction Program? And I know, under the Street Administration, we had the Adolescence Violence Reduction Program. I think that was eliminated under the, under the prior administration, or is that still in operation?
I don't think we had AVY.
Yeah, we had an AVR, AV, AVRP program. But if you can provide the numbers to me for, um, Youth Violence Reduction Program, as well as your Juvenile Enforcement Team Program, uh, just to look at, um, who's participating, um, the demographics of, um, the program in general, because that's something, I've always been a big fan of those two particular initiatives because they target-
You, you want them for last calendar year, year-to-date?
Yes, just give me the last calendar year, that would be great. All right. Thank you all for, for your participation. Next, we have Chairman of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Mr. Josh Shapiro, also the Honorable Judge, um, Lerner.
Good morning. My name is Josh Shapiro. I'm Chairman of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency.
You can begin your testimony.
Great. Well, thank you, uh, Councilman Johnson. I very much appreciate the opportunity to testify here today. Let me also, uh, thank Councilman Green, Councilman Greenley, Councilman Blackwell, and Councilman Dom as well for your, your interest. It is clear from both your presence here today, as well as the presence of other members of council, that you not only understand the issue of gun violence in our communities, but you understand that it takes a multidisciplinary approach to tackle it. We've had education advocates, we've had economic development advocates here, we've had public safety advocates. We all need to be together in dealing with this scourge of illegal guns in our communities and the toll it's taking, particularly on our youth. I'm here today to testify as Chairman of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. As some of you know, PCCD was created by the General Assembly back in nineteen-seventy-eight. I sit as Chairman of the forty-eight-member board. We have a three-fold mission, to put it succinctly, to enhance the quality and coordination of criminal and juvenile justice systems, to facilitate the delivery of services to victims in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and to increase the safety of our communities. A major part of the work that we do is accomplished through the awarding and administering of grants provided through several state and federal funding streams. In addition to that, we focus on collaboration and partnership in communities all across Pennsylvania to increase the safety and well-being of our communities. This week, and this is a critically important point I wanted to share with this committee, this week, PCCD will be releasing a competitive funding announcement- a competitive funding announcement in the amount of $5.4 million to assist communities and law enforcement in combating and preventing crime. Again, that's $5.5 million that will be put out to a competitive funding process, and I hope that Philadelphia takes advantage of this opportunity. I'd like to talk about some of the examples of the ways PCCD has partnered in the past and funded initiatives here in the city of Philadelphia, to give you a sense of our commitment to the residents of the city, but also a sense of the diverse work that we do and ways in which you can benefit from this partnership with PCCD. First, we have previously funded the Don't Shoot Program in Philadelphia under a PCCD funding stream. As most of you know, Don't Shoot is an aggressive, multi-strategy, anti-gang, anti-gun violence program designed to save lives and reduce the number of people impacted by gun crimes. We hired local analysts to comb through social media, prison recordings, and other means of communications, to learn more about gun crimes, to learn more about the offenders, to help build cases, to help identify offenders, to help understand patterns of crime, and ultimately to help reduce violence. Second, we have funded a program called Philly Ceasefire. A $250,000 grant was funded through Temple University to promote violence reduction in Philadelphia's 22nd Police District. Here, we've trained personnel to intervene with people who are at high risk of gun violence. We've intervened to help them get counseling and community-based support. Third, we have paid particular attention to returning citizens. I believe it was Councilman Green who asked about that earlier in the first panel. I can tell you from personal experience, as Chairman of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, we have instituted similar programs in Montgomery County, where we have focused on providing returning citizens in our county prison with job training, with anger management, with parenting education, among the three skills we have focused on. And in a county prison where our recidivism rate is roughly 62 percent, which is very high, but is shockingly low compared to other counties across the Commonwealth, we've reduced our recidivism rate for those who have participated in that program to under 20 percent. PCCD is focusing on returning citizens, and in particular, focusing on funding programs in our county prison system. Allegheny County is another example, where we have funded an initiative there that is working to reduce recidivism, and I would encourage the city of Philadelphia to follow suit. We have also focused particular attention on minority youth contact with police. Back in 2015, we provided a $200,000 grant to the Defenders' Association here in Philadelphia, to allow for a special collaborative program with police across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to provide training, to provide role plays, to provide behavioral health development, as Councilwoman Ginn was talking about before. We think this is particularly important, where you're having disproportionately high contact between minority youth and police. We have found in talking with police and other law enforcement, a real desire on their part to participate, just as much as we have found a desire to participate by those in the community. I want to also talk about parenting. I want to commend the city of Philadelphia for leveraging our funds to support the implementation of the Positive Parenting Program here in Philadelphia, an evidence-based program that teaches parents and families strategies for positive parenting. We have proven, and this program has proven repeatedly, to be effective at reducing risky and problematic behavior in our children that can often lead to gun violence. Listen, here's the deal. In the absence, in the absence of stricter laws that will get illegal guns off our streets, that will go after the straw purchasers, that will expand background checks, that will require reporting of lost and stolen, we have to step up in communities like Philadelphia all across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and deal with this, as you've talked about here today, in a multidisciplinary approach. I was heartened to see Commissioner Ross sitting next to one of the leaders of your social services agency, right here in the city of Philadelphia. We have got to bring both sides of this equation together, all sides of this equation together. Behavioral health, education, law enforcement, everybody's got to be rowing in the same direction. If Harrisburg's not going to act, if Harrisburg's not going to increase the laws on the books and go after those who are selling illegal guns in our communities, then we, as a city, we as a community, have to collaborate. PCCD stands ready to collaborate with you in that effort. I'm happy to answer any of your questions, but most importantly, I want to thank each and every one of you for having this hearing today and shining light on an issue that is so important. As I look at the people who are sitting here behind me, people who are advocates, people who are neighbors, people who are community leaders, they all desire the same outcome that you do and that I do, safer communities for our children, safer communities, period. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Commissioner Shapiro, for your testimony. For the record, can you state the source of funding for PCCD?
PCCD receives fundings from multiple sources, from federal sources of funding and state sources. We are often the, you know, we are often the agency that is required to administer those funds. So, at any given moment, we could be administering federal or state funds. The dollars that I spoke of earlier are a combination of VOKA funds, which are federal funds, as well as a combination of federal and state funds for some of the, for the, some of the community safety programs that I talked about.
And as a follow-up question, for counties to participate in those funding streams, are all of those funding opportunities based on RFPs or competitive challenge grants?
Everything is competitive, and everything is available on our website at pccd.p-a.gov. It is critically important that city council, whoever does your grant applications, or other communities who are represented here today, apply online. We understand the needs in Philadelphia are great. We're committed to making sure the resources get to the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I just have one question, also on the strike for the record. I think I just referred to you as Chairman, but Commissioner Shapiro, just briefly elaborate on the best practices that reduce the recidivism rate on a county level from 62 percent to 20 percent, because I know right now, the council president has assigned myself, working partnership with the Chairman of Public Safety, Councilman Jones, on a criminal justice special committee to reduce the recidivism rate here in the city of Philadelphia on a county level. Just briefly elaborate on your best practices that have attributed to the 20 percent number.
Sure. Look, this is a critically important issue to deal with returning citizens. Here's something that each and every county prison, and those who administer it, and I do as the Chairman of the County Commissioners in Montgomery County, here's something we all have in common. Each and every one of the people in our county prisons are going to return to society. They're going to return, and we have a responsibility to make sure that when they return, they're better off and that they don't come back. The best ways to do that, and I wear two hats when I talk about this, through PCCD and as the leader of Montgomery County's government, is to make sure, number one, there are job training programs in the prisons. Number two, we deal with anger management. That's such a big issue for so many of our inmates. Number three, we provide parenting education. When I first walked in to our prison in Montgomery County, I watched an inmate visiting with her young children, and they were visiting in a very sterile cafeteria, right? You can imagine what this would look like. The round metal tables with the kids sitting there with their parent. Let me tell you something. I'm a father of four young kids. I know you're a father to a young family. We don't sit around sterile metal tables talking with our kids. We lay on the floor. We do puzzles. We make Legos. We read books.
I build clubhouses.
You build clubhouses. Well, you're a better father than I am, I guess. I can't build, can't build clubhouses. But here's the thing. We didn't have a room like that in our county prisons. You know what we did? We took a section, we painted the walls bright colors, we put carpeting down, we got local church organizations to donate, you know, toys and things like that that they could play with. And now, when a child comes in to visit with their inmate parent, they lay on the floor. They interact. They make better eye contact. And when you give that prisoner the opportunity to hope for something while they're inside, and then the returning citizen something to hold on to when they get out so they don't go back, we're finding just tremendous benefit in that kind of, that kind of training. And what we're seeing from that three-pronged approach, the behavioral health side, particularly focused on anger management, the job training side, as well as the parenting side, we've reduced our recidivism rate from roughly 60 percent to roughly 20 percent. We're seeing this replicated in other prisons across Pennsylvania. These are the kinds of programs that I would encourage, I would encourage the city of Philadelphia, and I say that respectfully. You're the decision-makers here in the city. I am not. But I would encourage you to apply for grant funding through PCCD to be able to build that out in your prisons. It works, and we all have a responsibility to these returning citizens.
You know, just in wrapping up, before I bring Judge Lerner up, it was a couple years ago, I had the opportunity to go up to State Road with one of the foremost leaders here in the city of Philadelphia, Ms. Darcey, Spike Johnson, make sure I got it right, Johnson, Spike. She always checks me. Councilman, get it together. We have the same last name. But she allowed me to go on State Road with her to speak to some juveniles who were either sentenced or about to be sentenced. And I remember speaking at their gradu-, one time I spoke at their graduation from a program they were participating in, and the other time, I came to do a group round session with the young people. And I looked at the level of maturity of some of these young men, not, of them not recognizing that some of them were going to be going away for a very, very long time, and I don't think they really comprehended that that was going to be their fate. And so, for me, if we can grab a hold on a state level, and we're working with the life isn't greater for to try to make a connection between those who are upstate, in-state prison, working with some of the young men who are coming in on a county level as a way to deter them from becoming lifelong criminals, but it's something that we have to take a stronger look at, and I know we're on that path, but to go from 62 percent to 20 percent is a commendable accomplishment that should really be taken a look at as we, as we address the issue of recidivism here in the city of Philadelphia. But thank you for taking your time. I'm out of your schedule and being here. Go ahead.
My pleasure. If I may, just for one more moment. You talk about the pathway, and I wish Councilwoman Ginn was still here, because she's done some really terrific work in focusing on schools, and I think Councilman Taubner spoke about this earlier, you know, about kids staying in schools. That pathway that you speak of is something that we have to get serious about addressing in a holistic and multidisciplinary way. If we can get our kids into early childhood education, give them quality schools, give them the opportunity to be somewhere during the day in a learning, enriching environment, so they don't get in trouble with the law by making some stupid mistake the first time, and you'll forgive me for saying stupid in these distinguished chambers, but they make a mistake, and then guess what happens? They get put in prison. And you know what happens while they're waiting in prison? They become real criminals. We have got to do a better job focusing early on on education, focusing on making sure that these young people look up to people who are in jobs that are going to be able to provide for them, you know, their girlfriends, their boyfriends, their families, and ultimately for their children and grandchildren. Give them positive examples. This council seems to understand that. I really want to commend you for taking the lead on this issue, for understanding, we can't arrest our way out of this problem. We can't pass laws to get our way out of this problem. We've got to deal with this in a holistic, multidisciplinary way. I very much thank you for your attention, members of council, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Judge Lerner?
Yes.
We're going to call the next panel, please. Thank everyone for being patient. Thank you for your time for being here.
Karen Lynch, School District. Dr. Joel Fine. Terrell Bagby.
Good morning, or good afternoon.
Just state your name for the record.
I am...
Your Honor?
I am Benjamin Lerner, and I am the Deputy Managing Director for Criminal Justice, and I appreciate very much the opportunity to be here in this new role for me.
Councilman, I'm going to ask your indulgence, since, as you know, I have been in this position for all of one week. I'm going to ask your permission to have our office's Chief of Staff, Julie Wertheimer, present the prepared testimony, and then, of course, I'll be available to answer any questions that council members might have.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilman Johnson, or good afternoon, and members of the Committee on Public Safety.
Just state your name for the record before you start, please.
Julie Wertheimer. I am Chief of Staff to the Deputy Managing Director, and I'm here to testify on behalf of the administration regarding Resolution 160081. To date, the Managing Director's Office has been engaged in managing and overseeing a number of programs that either have a primary or secondary focus of preventing youth gun violence, many of which you've already heard about from our other government partners. Gun violence can often be the symptom of other problems, such as lack of education or employment opportunities. These initiatives seek to address those chronic issues. I'm going to run down a few of these. The first is, as you may be well aware, the city is engaged in a planning grant under the MacArthur Foundation's Safety and Justice Challenge. I bring that up because it was a collaborative effort between the First Judicial District, the District Attorney, the Defender, the Police Department, the prison system, and the Department of Behavioral Health, the type of collaboration that I think we've all been aiming towards here. In addition, it was the development of a comprehensive set of data-driven strategies that are aimed at reducing Philadelphia's overreliance on jails. In addition, we know that if we can address the pre-trial jail population and break the cycle of unnecessary incarceration, it will have a positive effect on reducing gun violence as well. The Philadelphia Reentry Coalition is composed of 100 criminal justice and reentry stakeholders, including related government agencies from local, state, and federal levels, as well as community-based nonprofits and service providers, researchers, returning citizens, and community advocates. The coalition's purpose is to advance communication, collaboration, and coordination towards a collective reentry strategy in Philadelphia, and to ultimately reduce recidivism rates for the 30,000-plus individuals who return to the city each year from jails and prisons. Home for Good, the coalition's five-year collective action plan, focuses on five overarching strategies to achieve this purpose, including strengthening foundation adopting a shared methodology, including a risk-needs responsibility, engaging the community, and aligning efforts. The coalition is focused into several teams, including data and metrics, community engagement, and communications, under the leadership of a representative implementation team and supported by staff. The Youth Violence Prevention Collaborative was created in 2012 under a United States Department of Justice grant from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. Philadelphia was selected at the time to be among 10 cities, now 15, in the National Forum on Youth Violence Prevention. On a national level, the forum is a network of communities and federal agencies that work together, share information, and build local capacity to prevent and reduce youth violence. The forum brings together people from diverse professions and perspectives to learn with each other about the crisis of youth and gang violence, and to build comprehensive solutions, both at the local and national levels. Here in Philadelphia, over 30 leaders from government, academia, and other stakeholder groups in Philadelphia are part of the collaborative, and represent the city's leadership across a wide cross-section of disciplines and recognition that many factors contribute to and can alleviate youth violence. Successes of the collaborative to date include stewarding, funding for youth employment and after-school programming, as well as creating linkages between community-based organizations and government agencies. This takes place primarily in the 22nd Police District as a pilot program, and as Councilman Green asked previous panel, we have done some work with the Commerce Department and around entrepreneurialship programs, but on a small scale, and perhaps is the opportunity to explore looking into expanding that. The Youth Violence Reduction Partnership you've heard about at length, so I will not go into that as much. I'll skip over that. Ceasefire Philadelphia is the evidence-based public health approach to reducing gun violence, developed by Dr. Gary Slekken in Chicago. The model, known as Cure Violence, but Ceasefire here, relies on credible outreach workers and interrupters to intervene and mediate in potentially volatile conflicts, with a focus on preventing retaliatory shootings. The program also works to offer social services and supports to those who interact with the program. The work is currently funded by the United States Department of Justice and executed in partnership with the Temple University CAT School of Medicine, of which I believe Dr. Reeves and Marla Davis Bellamy are here. Focused deterrence, you have also heard about the David Kennedy Violence Intervention Model, currently being implemented in South Philadelphia in conjunction with the Police Department, Probation and Parole, and the District Attorney's Office. The program runs call-ins for identified individuals known to be associated with violence, and provides activities and social services for the community at large. I should also mention ongoing support of the work that the U.S. Attorney's Office, under the leadership of Rob Reed, is doing in Strawberry Mansion with Dr. Sandy Bloom, around developing and implementing this sanctuary model in that neighborhood. The MDO also works with two programs that offer both transitional jobs and other services to young adults who have previous justice system involvement, PowerCore PHL, and the Center for Employment Opportunities, or CEO, not to be confused with the Mayor's Office of Community Empowerment and Opportunity. PowerCore has adapted the AmeriCorps model for justice involved young people, partnering with... Power Corps has adapted the AmeriCorps model for justice involved young people partnering with Education Works and the Phila- Philadelphia Youth Network. Power Corps annually enrolls a hundred individuals ages eighteen to twenty-six in a nine-month program. Six months of full-time service as AmeriCorps members with various city departments such as Parks and Rec, followed by three months of intensive job placement support. Referrals are made to Power Corps from a variety of programs, including RISE, the Mayor's Office of Reintegration Services, and also YVRP. CEO is a nationally recognized model for transitional jobs. The current effort is a collaboration between the city's Parks and Rec Department, the State Department of Corrections, and the Greenlight Fund. Young adults returning to Philadelphia from state incarceration are eligible to be referred to the program, which is conducted on an individual basis rather than through a cohort model. Permanent employment is sought after the training and transitional job periods are complete. These resources and programs strive to address the chronic issue of gun violence and other criminal justice-related issues, uh, and are all pieces of the puzzle working towards the solutions. These programs, uh, are programs that we need to continually evaluate and then expand if effective. I echo the sentiments that it takes a holistic collaborative model to address this issue. And we look forward, uh, to the opportunity to work with both City Council and community members to find solutions. Both the judge and I are happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Ms. Karen Lynch.
Thank you, um, again, Karen Lynch, School District of Philadelphia.
Sure, go ahead.
So I, I, I think the real purpose, um, that the School District has today is to just highlight and point out that we have a variety of partnerships. A good number of, uh, city agencies that you will hear from and have heard from today, we partner with. There are other organizations, community organizations across the city. Uh, I will be brief and respond to any questions that you might have. Um, there was one thing that the Police Commissioner did not share when he elaborated about the, um, the, the project that we have engaged with to reduce arrests, and I really, I have to stress it, um, and that is the collaboration and the active role of the Department of Human Services in the implementation. Every single one of the, uh, children that participates in the arrest diversion has an assessment that's done by trained professionals, um, that are, um, DHS social workers and social workers from COAs and social workers from the contractors that actually go into the homes, um, work with students, they learn a great deal about, uh, behavior and conduct throughout the course of, um, uh, the diversion. And so I, I just want to stress for everyone that it's not just an arrest diversion, it's also a social services initiative. Regarding the attendance, which, um, I started to speak to earlier, we have several initiatives underway. Um, the one that has been probably the most successful is a partnership that started with Harvard University several years ago, where, believe it or not, we send letters to families when their children have had, um, more than five and then more than ten, uh, absences. And those letters speak to, um, the child's, um, status within the class, their status within the school, and, uh, it compares them to children within their region that have had attendance issues. And when parents see and have more information about just what it, the, the impact of their child not attending school, we have many parents that have, uh, changed their approach and ensured that the attendance records of their children have improved. Um, lastly, I would share that among the many partnerships that we have, we are partnered with the International, um, Restorative Practices Organization, as well as Deveraux, who does our PBIS. It's our thought that by changing the behavior and giving young people the skills that they need in order to, um, uh, know how to resolve issues and know how to address conflict, that we're not just impacting our schools and our students, we're impacting the community as well. And each of those organizations and others are very interested in, um, in fact, creating restorative communities within, um, the city of Philadelphia. So not just, um, students, but also parents have the skill sets that they need within the community in order to help resolve questions, problems and issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Councilman Jones, uh, I mean Johnson, excuse me. Um, Ms. Wertheimer, since you opened the door in reference to Commerce, Economic Development, um, and Judge Lerner, since you're part of the Managing Director's Office, it's my understanding that, uh, as part of the Mayor's, um, initiative in reference to parks, recreation, and libraries, and major capital investment that he's proposing as part of his budget proposal, um, and I know that is, from my understanding, an idea that came from, uh, Managing Director Debrininis. So my question is, what role has, um, job opportunities and opportunities for returning citizens been part of that conversation? When you're talking about spending, um, hundreds of millions of dollars to improve our parks, recreation, and libraries, that's a huge capital investment, but also an opportunity not only for a economic development, anti-poverty, but also a job opportunity perspective for returning citizens. What role has your office played in reference to that initiative with, in the Mayor's Office?
I can't really answer, um, the question as to what role we've played in the past because, uh, as you know, this is new for me. So I turn that part of your question, uh, in a minute over to Ms. Wertheimer. But I can tell you that in terms of going forward, um, I don't think anybody, um, understands your point, um, more clearly than I do. Uh, I am, uh, from a background, uh, which has seen, uh, over the past several years that one of the two or three major issues in terms of restorative justice and rehabilitation and reducing recidivism, um, has to do with, um, not only training for jo- real job opportunities, but having those job opportunities available in the communities in which, um, our, um, criminal justice-involved individuals and individuals returning from custody are going to be residing in. Um, I would, uh, like to think that just as with the Power Corps program, the city is in a position to tie together the, um, the, the work that's going to be done and the employment opportunities that are going to be created through these programs with real job opportunities, uh, for returning citizens, for people who are involved in the criminal justice system generally. That's the kind of thing that I think this administration wants to put together.
Have you advocated that point to the mayor?
Um, I have not personally yet, but I expect to have that opportunity in the near future.
I mean, I think it's very critical, common times of the essence, I mean, as this program is not only being conceptualized, but being, putting together the, I guess, initial building blocks of this type of initiative, of course, depending on what happens here in this body from a budget standpoint. But I think it's very important, as this program is being laid out, that conversation needs to be part of the broader conversation of using every, I'm a big proponent on using every dollar that we have to leverage other assets. So we can use this opportunity, if it does get passed, as a way to help ci- citizens of the city of Philadelphia who are returning back into our city to provide a job opportunity to lead the road against recidivism, we need to do that. And I think from your role, having been a, a member of the bench and also an attorney, that's something very important, and I would, uh, and it's, I think it's incumbent upon you to do that, because these are questions I will be asking over and over and over and over again.
I hear that loud and clear, Councilman, and I assure you that I will do that.
Did you want to respond?
The only thing I'd add is, uh, the Managing Director, I'm sure, will provide, uh, more detail and a more thoughtful response during the course of the budget hearings that commence tomorrow. But I do know that the inclusion of both opportunity youth and adult returning citizens is very much a part of the workforce development conversation in general.
Right, I mean, having part of the conversation is important, but also I want to see ranges, numbers, goals, because that's what's important in reference to, uh, the value proposition of these dollars, if it does get passed.
We will make sure that, uh, that message is passed along.
And I just want to do a follow-up question with Ms. Lynch. Mr. Mosley, could you come to the table? Uh, Ms. Lynch, earlier in your colloquy with, with, um, Councilman Tobenberger, you made a statement in reference to about ninety percent of students being in class at times. I wanted to make, I want to make sure the record is clear in reference to that, that point.
I would stress the part where I said that I was going to forward the information. I talked about the percentages of the one hundred and eighty days, not ninety percent of children are in school on a given day.
Okay, so any given day, what's the current truancy rate, without specific number, but a range, average in the city of Philadelphia and the school district?
I don't have that, I did say that it was greater than fifty percent.
So it's greater than fifty percent truancy?
It's greater than fifty percent, which was the figure that was used. I hesitate to use a figure, um, because I, I would want to be most exact when I said it. That's why I said that I would share the information.
But when you say greater than fifty percent, what are you, what are you stating?
When I say greater than fifty percent?
Right.
As I understood the figure that was offered, it was shared that on any given day, fifty percent of the students enrolled in the School District of Philadelphia are not in attendance.
Okay.
And I said that that number is not accurate, and it's greater than that. There are more students in school each day than just fifty percent of our enrollment.
Okay, so would you say, okay, but would you agree there is a truancy problem here in the city of Philadelphia with students in the school district?
Yes, there is a truancy problem in the city of Philadelphia.
By significant numbers.
It's, it's a large truancy problem in the city of Philadelphia, yes.
And now you earlier stated that you're working with Harvard University on a program where you've sent letters to parents for children who have been truant five or more days?
Yes, I, I just named that as a single initiative that we have. I think when, um, uh, George was at the table, he also spoke to the fact that the, um, DA goes into schools, um, quite frequently. More engaging programs that we have, we're working with, uh, Department of Human Services. They have staff that are within our schools that go into homes and specifically determine what the issues of truancy are. Um, we're working with City Year, who does the very same, works with truancy. Um, we have, uh, staff that are engaged in our truancy court effort, which is an initiative that we have had in the city of Philadelphia for many years that involves the courts. I mean, that's just five initiatives that are underway that deal solely and specifically with truancy and attendance within the School District of Philadelphia.
Okay, but the, the, I guess, the Harvard-inspired program, that's the only program where you actually send out correspondence to parents or guardians? In reference to truancy?
No, no, the, the, the partnership that we have with the Department of Human Services actually involves parents and family members as well. It's, um, trained professionals, social workers, going into homes and finding out the causes and the reasons, and addressing the issues, the specific issues within a household related to truancy and the attendance of a child. And so, that's an initiative that is intended to both prevent long-term truancy and promote attendance. That's just one that involves, um, notifying parents, notifying, um, uh, children, and, um...
But in spite of all of these initiatives, as well as a new initiative, you would agree that we do have a significant truancy problem in the city of Philadelphia? Based on your statement earlier?
I, I would agree that we have a significant truancy, uh, issue in the city of Philadelphia, and I would share that, um, several of the initiatives have proven to be, um, uh, positive and helpful in increasing attendance.
I, I guess one of my questions and concerns, since you stated on the record there is a truancy issue in the city, when you have initiated, the District Attorney's Office is trying to initiate, there's been some communication, um, back and forth. So I'm, I'm wanting to get Mr. Mosley's perspective on what's your understanding in reference to the federal law about sharing information, that you've been able to initiate this program in other non-traditional public schools, um, but not with the school district?
And so, what, um, FERPA provides is that the school district has some, um, ability to determine who can be part of the information sharing process, and that would be done by way of a memorandum of understanding. An MOU currently exists with the court system, for example. They're certainly not an educator, per se, but they have access to the information, and that's why they've been able to start a truancy court. For purposes of, um, what we want to do with truancy, we would consider ourselves to be just as much a part of the educational process as anyone. And considering the effectiveness, it would make all the sense in the world to create an MOU with the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office so that we would have access to the information, which would allow us to bring pressure to bear on the parents, and get this, of young children who aren't going to school. Because that's the scenario where we're not going to say that it's solely the child who is, you know, avoiding school and doing these things with their own volition, it's because they don't have the support of their parents. Um, one of the things that I would point out, just to bring some specifics to, uh, this, this commission about what it is that our truancy program does, is it captures people who by definition are absent. If you're truant, then you're not available to be confronted by all of the resources that the school district has. The first step is to get them back into the picture, and that's what the Philadelphia DA's office brings to this scenario. When we send out our letter, when we have an assistant district attorney involved, well, these, these people know that there's the potential for prosecution. And when you have that potential, when you have that leverage, then people show up. And once they show up, then they can avail themselves of all the resources, and that's all we want to do. We've been doing this, by the way, since nineteen ninety-nine, and we used to do it with the school district, and we had, you know, even greater percentages in terms of the effectiveness.
So, so my understanding, you have an MOU with the First Judicial District?
We don't have an MOU. The school district has an MOU with the First Judicial District that doesn't include us.
I'm not aware of any MOU with the First Judicial District, not at all.
Okay, well, there's, this, I mean, there's two different perspectives here. Either one person is saying something that's accurate or not. So, Mr. Mosley, you're saying there is an MOU, and Ms. Lynch, you're saying there's not an MOU?
I'm not aware of any MOU with the, with the courts.
What I know is that the courts have access to the information. We met, and the question earlier was to get some of the correspondence between my office and the school district regarding these issues. I'm not sure that there's correspondence, but there has been meetings, there have been meetings.
There have definitely been meetings, in fact.
And at those meetings, what we've tried to determine is whether or not we can execute an MOU between the District Attorney's Office, the school district, and the courts. Now, they've already begun the process and they've been sharing information with the courts. That says to me that they have an understanding. Whether there's an, uh, a memorandum that memorializes that, okay, maybe there isn't, but they have the understanding, they've been sharing the information with the courts. They do not share that information with the district.
Ms. Lynch, Ms. Lynch, hold on. I guess my follow-up to that is, at one point, was there some type of, let's not use the word MOU. At one point, was there some type of understanding between the school district and the District Attorney's Office where information was being shared?
I am not aware of any sharing of information or the implementation of this initiative any time in the past. And I will share with you that I have tried repeatedly to address this issue and to come up with solutions. And at one point, I can recall, we all sat in the District Attorney's Office, and when I say all of us, I mean the Commissioner for the Department of Human Services, Judge Doherty, members of the truancy staff, both in the school district as well as at DHS. We all met numerous times to try and resolve this issue, and Judge Doherty threw up his hands and said, "There's no way that this information can be shared." At one point, we even asked whether or not there could be an administrative order from the courts giving this information to the DA's office. And Judge Doherty said that there was no legal justification for him to share the information in that way, and the DA asked us to please leave his office. We have tried repeatedly to try and resolve this issue, and we haven't had any success.
Okay, let me just, as a follow-up, Mr. Mosley, so you're currently sharing information with non-traditional public schools, charter schools, is that correct?
That's correct.
And how are you doing that?
With a memorandum of understanding.
Okay, and it's, you're understanding that those various schools do not believe sharing that information is in violation of FERPA?
I certainly hope they don't, because they share the information.
Okay, I guess my, one other question, I don't want to belabor this back and forth, but clearly there is a need for some understanding and coming together. Um, and one of the aspects that, you know, City Council is engaged with every spring is a budget process, where various departments come to City Council to advocate in reference to funding. So I would think there's an opportunity... So I would think there's an opportunity to have this conversation as we're going through the budget process, to come to some type of understanding, maybe in this enlightened spring process of budget information sharing, this information can come together. Because I'm here, I've been around this space for a little while, and it seems to be some perspectives that's not totally being provided. So I'm not sure what the difference of opinion, maybe some policy perspectives where one entity doesn't believe the other entity should have this type of information, but clearly based on the testimony today, we have a truancy issue in the city of Philadelphia. The purpose of this hearing is to address youth gun violence. One way we can take some steps to do that is making sure that our children are in schools and not out on the streets, who are prone to either stray bullet or some other type of issue. So one thing that I will come back to in reference to these, both departments, both the school district will be here to testify, as well as district attorney's office, to come up with some type of understanding or process going forward by the time you come back to the budget process of where we are in reference to this conversation. Because obviously, we've done this kind of ring around the rosy perspective, let's not come to some type of understanding going forward.
I would also urge that in that discussion, that the courts also be a party to that conversation, because truancy and truancy court is within their domain.
I understand, and the courts are also up in the budget process, so I'm saying it's incumbent upon both the school district, the district attorney's office, and Judge Lerner, since you're a former member of the bench, you could also reach out to some of your former colleagues in First Judicial District to move this process along. Because to me, it seems that we're doing what's called three-card molly.
Can I just add briefly something from my judicial experience, which might have some relevance here? Mr. Mosi talked earlier about the direct file proceedings where juveniles are charged in adult court. Those proceedings then lead to something called a decertification hearing, where a judge decides under state law whether it's in the public interest to keep that juvenile in adult court or send him or her back to juvenile court. For the last 15 years until the end of February, I was the judge who was assigned to those hearings, and I can assure you, Councilman Green, that one of the major considerations that I took into account was, was the school records, both in terms of attendance and behavior of each of these juveniles. And I am, maybe I'm not sure exactly how, but we were able to work out with the district attorney and with the school district, a, the providing of those records to the court, to the district attorney, and of course, to defense counsel as part of the information that I used in ruling on those decertification issues. And I think we did so without a formal memorandum of understanding, but with an agreement that the school district would accept a court order issued by me to make these records available in these cases.
And we did, we asked for the court order, and we asked for the court to give us that court order, and the court refused at the time. So it's very possible, we spoke with Judge Dougherty, and he would not issue the court order, and so it's very possible that there may be a change, but if that's the way that you received it, we were more than willing to...
Absolutely.
Yes, we were definitely more than willing, but the court was not willing.
So just, just for resolve, on this issue, and I'm following up on my colleague, Councilman Green's perspective, and I think Judge Dougherty, who was a fine jurist, now Supreme Court Justice, there's a new administration and leadership at family court, but I think we still need to revisit, just to find out if it's legal, not legal, and then how we move forward to make sure everybody is on the same page. And that's why we had these hearings to kind of connect the dots as relates to what's in best interest of our youth. And so I want to turn it back over to Mr. Green, if you have any other questions before we wrap up for the next panel.
I'm just going to close, obviously Judge Lerner, you were able to get it done through the bench by working with both the district attorney's office and the school district. Now that you're in a different role, but obviously we still need you to mediate disputes between various parties in this type of conversation as we go forward. So hopefully we can lean on your learned experience to help bring about some, at least movement toward a resolution of this issue. Thank you.
I do just have one comment before I bring up the next panel. Regarding this Public Works project, that the administration is moving forward, Public Works project meaning the proposal to float a bond, I think in amount of, I think it's $560 million. I may be off some figures, but I know it's a significant amount of funding to refurbish, revitalize parks and recreational facilities throughout the city of Philadelphia, which would probably be the biggest public works project since NTI. And what Councilman Green specifically is getting to is, we think that most certainly that proposal should include young people, returning citizens, and opportunity to participate in these job opportunities, the development, rather than establishing a partnership with the building trades. But if you're going to be built, if we're going to be building on recreation facilities and libraries throughout the city of Philadelphia, we all, we know that if you want to tell a young man to put down a gun, we should be able to provide them some type of opportunities and resources to occupy their time. My grandmother once told me that as a young man, the idle, idle, idle mind is the devil's workshop. And as a young man growing up in South Philly, when we didn't have anything to do, if I wasn't going to pow, if I wasn't going, well, I didn't go to pow, I went to, I went to pow, it was at the Armory when I was younger, Broad and Wharton Street. If I wasn't going to shoot playground, I couldn't afford Christian Street YMCA. I think you can go at that time, it cost a dollar to come in and use the gym, but for the most part, you, your parents had to have some type of money for you to have a membership to go to the Y. But when I wasn't doing those things, to be quite frank with you, I'm down at FDR Park, I'm downtown on my bike, I'm at the parkway riding around with my friends from eighteen and Diggis, and being quite frank with you, probably wasn't doing the things I should be doing, but, you know, I'm just riding the bike trying to have fun, because I'm not engaged in something that's positive. But I know if you give a young man a job, they'll be so tired, they don't want to come outside and be on the corner, because they're working all day. And a classic example of how it works is power corps. Like, when I see the power corps young men walking through my neighborhood, it might be like 25 or 30 of them with these blue jumpsuit uniforms on. For the most part, these are young men that are engaging in something that's positive, regardless if they have a, a background in terms of a record, and they're having opportunity to put money in their pockets. So when you, when you're focusing on doing something positive and you're making money, it just takes away other opportunities for you to be standing on the corner and getting involved in something that's negative. And so what my colleague is talking about is making sure that part of this conversation with this proposal involves our young people as it relates to building up our recreational facilities. And I'm quite sure we're going to be working together as a unit on this and to make sure it's a priority, but this is your position, and this is your purview as relates to criminal justice here in the city of Philadelphia, so I just wanted to share that.
I, I understand that perfectly, and based on my own experience, I absolutely, 100% agree with it.
And last, for the school district of Philadelphia, Ms. Karen, I'm going to follow up with you as well. We're working with a project with the lifers in Grader Ford on a program called FAT, and it's fathers achieving, fathers and children together, and it's connecting dads who are incarcerated, who will be returning home, to work with their, their children as it relates to the Philadelphia School District. And so we probably have some ideas to see in that capacity as it relates to reentry. Is there any opportunity to kind of connect the two and go from there? So I'll keep your abreast on what that looks like moving forward. But thank you for your service from the social service standpoint as well with the school district of Philadelphia. Thank you very much for your testimony. Can you please call up the next panel, please?
Faustino Castro, juvenile chief of probation, Family Court Division. Dr. Joel Fine, the Violence Prevention Initiative at CHOP. Attorney Robert Reed, U.S. Attorney's Office.
Mr. Fine from Children's Hospital, could you just state your name and record, for the record, please, and kick, and start the, can you sit at the podium? You can't sit at a councilperson's desk, but it's all right. You can have my seat at any time, but, you know, for the record, we just have to have you at the panel. Just state your name and record, your position, please, for the record.
My name is Joel Fine. I'm a attending physician in the emergency department at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, and a professor of pediatrics and emergency medicine at the University of Pennsylvania School of Medicine. I'm also the director of CHOP's Violence Prevention Initiative, and the director with Dr. Ted Corbin, co-director of the National Network of Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Programs. I'm presenting today on behalf of myself and Dr. Ruth Abaya, who's also an attending physician in the emergency department at CHOP, and a lead researcher on a youth gun violence research study completed at CHOP. I want to apologize that I will have to leave exactly after my testimony to get to a dissertation defense, I'm so sorry about that. We want to thank the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Public Safety for your leadership in highlighting the troubling issue of gun violence in Philadelphia, and the entire Philadelphia City Council for supporting Councilman Johnson's resolution proposing to create a commission on youth gun violence. Youth violence, including violence involving guns, is a public health problem that is impacting the health and wellness of an increasing number of children and families in Philadelphia. In CHOP's emergency department, we've seen an increasing number of youth injured through violence, with numbers rising from 308 in 2013 to 480 in 2015. Children as young as 12 years old have bullet wounds from intentional peer-to-peer violence. Even children as young as two years old have unfortunate injuries involving a firearm. Approximately one out of every dozen adolescents who visit the emergency department, for whatever reason, have considered suicide. And unfortunately, these youth who have access to a firearm are more successful in completing that suicide. Thank you. Researchers also told us that children exposed to trauma such as early life stress go on to have poor health outcomes later in life, never reaching their full potential. This is what makes violence not just a social justice issue, but a true health issue that obligates our medical facilities to play a large part in ameliorating the impact and incidence of violence. In 2006, our doctors, our nurses, and other emergency department staff cared for the young girls injured in the Amish school shooting at West Nickel Mines School in Lancaster County. The gunman shot eight girls ranging from ages six to 13, killing five of them. This highly publicized incident, no doubt traumatized that community and shocked our nation. Shouldn't our nation be similarly shocked at the gun violence affecting the children and their families every single day in Philadelphia's neighborhoods? We can't and must not consider this part of our urban landscape, or we risk raising another entire generation of youth who are caught in a vicious circle of violence and trauma. Rather than being just horrified witnesses to the carnage of violence in our city, Philadelphia's healthcare community has played, and will continue to play, an undeniable role in reducing its incidence and impact. Each and every healthcare provider can participate in this effort, from primary care and emergency nurses and physicians, to trauma specialists and healthcare researchers. CHOP has recognized this obligation, and for decades has been creating programs that assist Philadelphia-area children and families impacted by violence, most recently organized into the CHOP Violence Prevention Initiative, which I co-lead with Dr. Stephen Leff. The Violence Prevention Initiative, recognized nationally by the American Hospital Association, applies a public health approach, intervening at multiple touchpoints in children's lives, creating and implementing programs at CHOP facilities and throughout our community to prevent school bullying, domestic violence, and peer youth violence. This initiative seeks to provide the right care at the right time and in the right location. It gives CHOP an opportunity to partner with other organizations with similar goals and provides much-needed continuity between our hospitals, our schools, and our community. We know that healthcare providers, particularly those who care for children, play a key role in identifying and treating those patients who experience injury-related post-traumatic stress, understanding that even our own medical treatment to these children can cause greater trauma. We have trained more than 1,000 frontline CHOP staff to practice trauma-informed care, ameliorating the potentially traumatic aspects of treatment, and recognizing how prior-life events and stressors play into the child and parents' interpretations and responses to our treatment. However, it's not enough just to try out what we think would work against this insidious disease. Our academic institutions need to do the important research that uncovers the why before we establish the how of violence prevention. In one such research project performed by our team at CHOP and led by Dr. Ruth Abaya, we wanted to learn firsthand why teenagers in Philadelphia might access a gun. As part of our standard care, teenagers who are seen in our ER are, they're already asked a standard questionnaire. It's a web-based, computerized behavioral health screen answering questions about depression, suicide, violence, post-traumatic stress, and substance use. When a teenager gives a positive response to the question, "Could you obtain a gun within one day?", we asked him or her to participate in a one-on-one interview to learn more about what that meant to them. This was a small research project, but one that gets to the heart of what we may need to do to keep our children safe from gun violence. So what are the lessons that we gathered from these youth? We learned that teenagers in Philadelphia who have access to firearms are motivated to use them primarily for protection, due to a fear of threat of harm to themselves or their families. Some youth were more specifically concerned about threats to my mother, my sister, or my grandmother, and that they would use a gun, quote, "Only if somebody close to me was in a life-or-death situation, like if something were ever to happen to my mom." Youth respondents also listed retaliation as a motivation for accessing a firearm, with one youth stating, quote, "Sometimes in that situation, you feel a lot of anger, or you just feel like something can be resolved if you just had it," unquote. The majority of them said that it would be quite easy to obtain a firearm, with one youth stating, "I have friends that have access to their guns, and I could just call them." A few of the youth stated that guns are everywhere, and they know that family members would have them as well. In light of these insights, our efforts may best be focused on reducing, reducing the situations where youth feel that they need to arm themselves for protection. Once a teenager feels that he or she needs a gun, there are few things that can convince them otherwise. One respondent told us, "It's a mindset. If you have that on your mind that you need a gun, you'll go beyond everything to get a gun, beyond what anybody says." Gun carrying is often a choice that may appear to the youth to be the only choice. One very poignant comment that we heard from a teenage boy is, "I don't want a gun, but the world is just so crazy right now." They know intuitively that they have, having a gun means you have crossed a certain line from which they may not return. One youth said, "When you pull a gun out on somebody, then you've started something, and you got to walk around with a gun all the time." So what could keep a child from accessing a weapon? We start with the wisdom of some of the teenagers who stated that even though they could easily get a gun, they would choose not to. These kids with whom we spoke knew firsthand the devastation that guns can reap. One child even reported discharging his weapon at a tree. Upon seeing the extensive damage that was done to that tree, he stated, "I can't do that to somebody." They have experienced palpably and personally the harm done to families, to parents who threaten each other with weapons, and to their neighbors in fights that ended badly. In many cases, these fights involve people who felt angry, frustrated, and powerless, unless they had the gun. Despite their knowledge of the danger of firearms, children know that they live in a violent world, and that they struggle to find safe ways to navigate that environment. What these kids are telling us is that our efforts need to provide them with ways of dealing with the anger and frustration, and most importantly, give them the power and confidence to change their situations and their world without using violence. In addition, we have to recognize the important role of family and close friends in helping children make the choice not to access guns. Teenagers in our study were concerned about how families' members would feel if they got hurt or killed, or even incarcerated because they obtained a weapon. Some of them also worried about what could possibly happen to other family members, especially younger siblings, if there was an accessible gun around. One youth said, "If I hold it in my hand, I'm going to think about what's going to happen to my family, what's going to happen to my future, what's going to happen when I'm gone." CHOP's been working to change the landscape of violence in Philadelphia through programming specifically designed for assault-injured children. Our Violence Intervention Program is similar to the Healing Hurt People Program at Drexel, the important work of which you'll hear from my colleague Ted Corbin. The CHOP Violence Intervention Program has been refined for even our youngest Philadelphians, children, adolescents who come to our ER after a violent injury. children adolescents who come to our ER after a violent injury. Because we know that these assault-injured youth are at the very highest risk for future violence and poor outcomes, the CHOP VIP has specifically trained our clinicians and staff members to see 50 or more assault-injured children every year. Our specialists help these youth and their families navigate school support, the justice system, and medical follow-up. And almost all of these children require some sort of mental or behavioral health services, and our VIP specialists can provide direct therapy to prevent post-traumatic stress disorder, as Dr. Jackson has mentioned before. The most important priority for any parent is the health and safety of their children. An exposure to violence, in many cases, is Philadelphians' most significant threat to health and safety, and it needs to be addressed directly and with as much vigor as any other public health issue. This is why I'm grateful to be invited to represent the CHOP and to share our research and information on youth violence prevention. We at CHOP look forward to continuing to participate in this dialogue and being an active part of the solution to keep our children safe and out of our emergency department and trauma unit. Please consider us as a resource in your work on gun violence prevention, and thank
State your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Faustino Castro Jimenez, Chief of Probation, Juvenile Division.
Proceed.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the invitation to speak on this important subject, namely the prevention and assistance of gun violence among our most precious commodity, our young people of Philadelphia. I have the privilege of overseeing Philadelphia's Juvenile Probation Department, and I am a public servant who firmly believes that the work we do today will have a direct impact on the future leaders of tomorrow. I serve under the leadership of Family Court's Administrative Judge, the Honorable Margaret Murphy, who unfortunately could not be here today. Accompany me here today is my Deputy Chief, Mr. Benny Price. Juvenile probation's jurisdiction covers youth between the ages of 10 through 17 who are resident in the city of Philadelphia and who acquire treatment, rehabilitation, and supervision. And although youth arrested need to be processed by the Juvenile Division prior to their 17th birthday, our jurisdiction can potentially extend to the age of 21. I currently oversee a complement of dedicated men and women who each and every day strive to improve the lives of our most vulnerable population. I must underscore that our probation officers work arduously to ensure that our youth have a fighting chance to fulfill their potential, that the patterns of delinquency behaviors are minimized, and that as behavioral change agents, they devote their efforts to maximize the talents and aptitudes of our young men and women. It is evident, however, that there are many obstacles that our young people face today. Many who fall under the poverty line struggle with the basic necessities of life. Some are in single-parent homes, where the parent is the only breadwinner and caregiver. And unfortunately, there are youth who drop out of school prematurely. Younger youth who do not partake regularly in academics and older youth who struggle to find sustainable employment are the two glaring predictors of future delinquent behaviors. Our young people today face many roadblocks. However, we also must recognize that our young people are extremely resilient and have the will to succeed if properly guided. To that end, it is an opportunity missed if we do not address the issues and challenges they face today, as we will certainly run the risk of having to face those unresolved issues in their adulthood. Juvenile probation is committed to doing our part. Last summer, 478 juvenile justice-involved youth were successfully employed through Philadelphia Youth Network. Additionally, during court-order residential placements, 282 youth received their high school diplomas, and 47 of our older youth proudly earned their GEDs. We are now working towards connecting our older youth to apprenticeship programs that will hopefully sustain long-term employment. As previously mentioned, we have jurisdiction for those youth placed on probation supervision until they reach the age of 21. But the probation population encompasses only a small percentage of the total juvenile population within the city. Although we have decreased the number of youth year after year from re-penetrating the system, I recognize that there is still much work to be done. In 2006, for example, at any given point during the year, we had close to 6,000 youth under probation supervision. This year, the supervision population stands at 2,428. And even with our decreased supervision numbers, our biggest challenge is still, in fact, the senseless and unfortunate gun violence that infects our communities. A victim of a shooting of a homicide is a catastrophic event that causes trauma, invades the peace within families, and at times perpetuates further retaliatory acts of violence. I can share with you that every time a report comes across my desk that documents violent events involving one of our youths, I always ask myself, "What other programs should have been in place? What interventions, if any, would have prevented youths from being a victim or a perpetrator of gun violence?" Many of these issues we attempt to resolve are rooted in behavioral, mental health, familial, environmental, and economic factors. In juvenile probation, we respond to these factors with a myriad of preventive services that address the individual criminal genetic needs that our youth exhibit while involved in our system. With respect to gun violence, specific endeavors to address gun violence, juvenile probation continues to respond through targeted enforcement, increased supervision of our youth whom exhibit high risks, and the use of enhanced GPS monitoring, and a host of other prevention evidence-based programs. Through our juvenile enforcement team, or JET, our armed officers along with Philadelphia Police, conduct probation searches and apprehend youth on priority bench warrants due to weapon offense charges. Importantly, our JET team also conducts interviews and actually has gathered intelligence that led to significant gun confiscations and arrests. Although the gathering of information is time-consuming, it is an essential process to identify key members of groups involved in retaliations. Our JET team also continues to be involved in Focus deterrence, a joint interagency effort that responds to group violence, and that every active member is targeted for enforcement through the use of appropriate sanctions. Further, juvenile probation was a partner in the National Youth Violence Collaborative that focused on reducing gun violence. In Philadelphia, efforts to mobilize resources were geared towards the city's 22nd Police District. Similarly, our Youth Violence Reduction Unit, or YVRP, is tasked with intensely supervising those youth that are at higher risk to be victims of homicide. In fact, in 2015, a total of 1,294 enforcements were carried out by both JET and YVRP. Also, along with Philadelphia Police, our YVRP team supervised our high-risk youth whom had been adjudicated on gun charges, sent to state or private residential placements, and thereafter were reintegrated to communities within the 12th, 19th, 22nd, 24th, 25th, and 39th Police Districts. Via these successful targeted enforcements, and since 2013, we have been able to confiscate 62 illegal firearms from youth on probation supervision. Indeed, it is difficult to measure how many additional shooting incidents were avoided by this accomplishment, but nevertheless, the removal of the firearms decreased the likelihood of their use in our city's neighborhoods. Moreover, our involvement at the Delaware Valley Intelligence Center, or DIVIC, has allowed information sharing with other state and federal partners, and to further build our capabilities to assess, identify, and target youth that may be involved in potential criminal behavior. This year, we are beginning to have conversations with ATF to further enhance our enforcement efforts with respect to confiscations of illegal weapons. Our GPS program is another tool we use to monitor youth with underlying weapons charge. The GPS program allows our young people to remain safely in their communities while assuring they are in compliance with the terms of supervision. Our GPS devices can restrict the youth's movement by placing restricted zones on places a youth should not be in. This is especially useful for youth with known violent group associations, where the GPS program alerts us if the youth is congregating in a specific area. We monitor our GPS youth 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and when violations occur, they are immediately listed before a juvenile court judge to address the violations. These are just a few of juvenile probation's ongoing initiatives. We are encouraged by our progress, but we are certainly open to conversations with city council to improve outcomes for our youth. We want to assure that we responsibly respond to their needs, that they do not get involved in today's popular delinquent behaviors, so as to avoid our young people from populating the prisons of tomorrow. Thank you.
State your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Robert Reed. I'm the Executive Assistant United States Attorney for the U.S. Attorney's Office here in, located here in Philadelphia. And I do not have written testimony, but let me see if I can say something that makes sense. First of all, I am a stat person. I like baseball stats, but I follow the crime stats, statistics, very closely. And I even am looking right in, before me, of these horrible statistics that we see, and it's not just from a year, it's not from two years. If we go back to 2001, there have been more than 4,700 people murdered in the streets of Philadelphia, and over 22,000 people shot. That is human beings with a bullet hole through them. It's unbelievable. And I will tell you that I am on the police system, so in the past week, I can't tell you how many precisely the number of shootings and stabbings there were, but it's completely unacceptable in a civilized society. So let me say this, that, you know, there have been a lot of, and I'm really humbled to be in this room with all of these great people, we have been here and done this before. You know this isn't the first hearing that we've had on this, or the first time we've gotten together. So one suggestion is, let's not throw out things that we have done, even if they may not be perfect. For example, my colleague here talked about the National Youth Violence Collaborative that was, that the former administration received a grant to focus on youth violence in the 22nd Police District. We got almost everybody in this room working on that, and it seems to me that that should keep going. Maybe you do it a little differently. Maybe it's organized somewhat differently, but the bottom line is, there's a lot of institutional intelligence that needs to keep working on this.
Are you friends of ceasefire?
No, I'm not. That's different, although it was part of it. No, there was a Department of Justice grant that the city received, and they focused on bringing all resources to deal with youth violence from 14 to 24 in the 22nd Police District.
In the 22nd Police District.
22nd Police District. And this went on from 2012, and it really just ended. And it was funded in part by the Stonely Foundation. So we had education, law enforcement, we had a Department of Human Services, Judge Doherty, who was then, you know, the Family Court Judge was the head of it. So let me say this, that, as I say, everything we have, we have, we have here. I will just tell you, from the point of view of the U.S. Attorney's Office, we have really undertaken, and you've heard the words holistic or comprehensive, I think we've tried to do that over the last six, seven years under U.S. Attorney Zane Meminger. We continue to, we are the heavy hitters in the game. As you know, if you come into federal court with a violent crime, a drug crime, you are going to spend lengthy period of time in federal prison, and that prison sentence could be served anywhere in the country. But on the other hand, we're doing a lot with reentry, and we are probably one of the most, we are probably one of the most robust, respected reentry programs in the United States. And I'll talk about that in a minute. Actually, let me just, since I've got people here from juvenile probation, let me say this, that we started a program, working with juvenile probation and Family Court and Judge Doherty. It's called the Sports for Juvenile Justice. And we started it a number of years ago. It brings children, kids who are in the juvenile justice system, it gives them the opportunity to play sports and learn sports and be mentored while they're on juvenile probation. And as a result, where we are right now, there's 400 people who have gone through that program. It just seems to me that that's a great model to work with. That has not cost us any money. I believe Department of Human Service has been supporting it. We have just made a film, which I'm happy to share with the city council. I think it's a very moving film to see what impact this has had, which is just an idea that it says, "How can we get kids to think out of the box, to see that there is hope?" So let me just talk about some of the prevention things that we've done. And I know Councilman Jones is very supportive of youth courts, but we started youth courts in a number of schools, including Strawberry Mansion. Councilman Jones actually brought the youth court here in 2012. When I first appeared before at the youth court, and I was helping teach it, actually, which is not something I would normally do, one of the kids said, "I think that all prosecutors and judges should burn in hell." Well, fast forward to last year, last academic year, 88 people went through youth court, which is a restorative justice program, and those kids at Strawberry Mansion were not suspended. That's a great success. This year, I believe it's 48 out of 50 were not suspended in hearings. So this is an important program. We've had another program called Voices of Youth, to let kids speak in their own voices. It's great to have people want to learn algebra and literature, but they, we need to be mindful of what they're going through. And so I talk about movies. We're going to have a great movie about Strawberry Mansion students coming out to talk about transformation, and to see how these kids have really overcome some obstacles. We've helped bring football and ballet to the Strawberry Mansion team, neighborhood, I should say. We've worked with Don't Fall Down the Hood, doing what George Mosi says. The U.S. Attorney and I go quarterly. It's a great program, we think, which helps teach the kids of consequences, but also saying that we're not against them, we actually want to support them. But in that group, the one I just saw within the last month, there were 24 kids, and six of them were there for, I think, aggravated assault, and five for robbery. That's just unbelievable. So we have to get down to the foundation of what is causing these problems. And I really do believe, and I think some of the people who've taught me are here, Joel Fine was sitting in this very seat, Ted Corbin is in the back, John Rich with Drexel and Healing Hurt People. I do believe the trauma-informed care is critical, and the implementation of that throughout the criminal justice system is incredibly important. You should know that in 2014, our office applied for and received a Department of Justice grant under Project Safe Neighborhoods to bring trauma-informed care to the community within Strawberry Mansion. That has never happened ever before in the United States, where an urban area was given the opportunity to learn about trauma and to try to learn about how to heal trauma. It has never happened before. We've been at it for now a year and a half, and we're hoping to expand it over time. The community has started, they call themselves SMASH, Strawberry Mansion, a Sanctuary for Hope. And the idea here is that we are working with the community so they really can understand historical trauma, and what they really go through every day with poverty, and addiction, and abuse, and racism, and all of these issues that face them. But if you throw violence on top of it, and you look at these, what people in that community and others in Philadelphia, in South Philadelphia, in West Philadelphia, in Kensington, suffer every day, and it's been going on for a generation, generations, it's no wonder that people suffer from trauma. So to get to the root causes, we don't have to wait, I think, and we should not wait for trauma teams on the day of a shooting. We should have trauma-informed care now. I hear it's going on in schools, I know teachers have been educated about it, but we need to work with communities to provide opportunities for them to learn about it and to implement programs. So the last thing I will say is that I think mentorship, and everyone talks about mentorship, since I believe you brought up Gredeford and the Gredeford Program, our office has started a program with lifers, two lifers organizations at Gredeford, where we're working with these groups to create, we've created a reentry program, a 10-week behind-the-walls program, followed by, and they're called Transformational Navigators. These are the lifers who are going to be mentoring the people behind the walls, who are going to be coming back to the community of Philadelphia. And then when they get out, there, we're going to have another 10-week program, and there's going to be external transformational navigators. The idea here is that through the support of the lifers, the support of people who really can relate, and of course, can relate to the experience of being in prison, I mean, that's not my experience. I can support programs, but I think that there are so many returning citizens who can be of support and mentor young people coming out, to let them understand the dangers of proceeding and continuing in activity that they have been involved in. So anyway, I could obviously talk for about three million years. I thank you for this opportunity, and this is great, what you're doing here.
Thank you. Next panelist, please.
Terrell Bagby, interim Director of Rise. Good morning, Councilman Johnson, Councilman, members of the Committee on Public Safety. I'm providing this testimony on behalf of Acting Prison Commissioner Michael Resnick and Deputy Commissioner Blanche Carney. When I read the resolution, as a professional, I was excited to see that the commissioner does have a seat on the commission. As an individual, I was also excited because I know one of the primary functions of government is to protect its citizens, and this is from a personal perspective. As a father of three young men in the city of Philadelphia, I do understand the situation when it comes to youth and gun violence. I teach my children to resolve their conflicts positively. I teach my children to resolve their conflicts positively, but it looks like that, listen to all the stats and the testimony out here today, there's such proliferation of guns that they may be outnumbered. So I'm glad that you're taking this initiative, and we look forward to assisting you in any endeavor that we can at the Philadelphia prison system. So I get in trouble when I stray off script, so I'm going to get back on script. My name is Terrell Bagby, I'm the interim Director of RISE, which is the Reintegration Services, and I am pleased to appear before you today to testify on Resolution Number One Six Zero Zero Eight-One regarding youth gun violence in Philadelphia. The Philadelphia prison system, the PPS, has a significant interest in reducing gun violence, more specifically, youth gun violence, both because it would reduce the number of citizens behind our walls, and it helps the greater Philadelphia community thrive. RISE offices assist and facilitates the successful reentry and reintegration of formerly incarcerated individuals. Out of the approximately thirty-two-thousand individuals who were released from the PPS in 2015, approximately fourteen-thousand walked through the doors of RISE seeking help. Many of those did so in their own volition because they sought guidance and reintegrated into their family relationships, their friendships, and within the communities. But also out of that number, we do wonder what happens to those who don't come through the doors of RISE. Do they go to other programs? Do they go back in the community and try to adjust on their own, or do they also end up as a victim of the type of violence that you're seeking to address today? At RISE, we provide many services to our clients, including case management, adult based education, GED, life skills training, job readiness training, computer literacy, culinary arts, which is done by Philabundance, forklift certification, where we have an agreement with Goodwill Industries. We also offer an expungement assistance for those who want to get some of the matters off their record expunged, and that's done through the Philadelphia Lawyers for Social Equity. And we have a fatherhood parenting program, which is done by our in-house father enrichment program, which focuses on parenting and healthy relationships, anger management, conflict resolution, and also job readiness and search assistance and other services. We also offer Compass Benefit Bank screening. In addition, we're also a provider partner for Philicor, I'm sorry, Power Courts, what we talked about earlier, for those who are ages of eighteen to twenty-six. RISE is a provider, a partner provider for, of Power Corps. Under the direction of Acting Commissioner Michael R. Resnick and Deputy Commissioner Blanche Carney, we are collaborating with Councilman, President Darrell Clark's office, and the Pennsylvania Horticulture Society on the Vacant Lot Initiative that provides green jobs for returning citizens. We started with maybe a hundred and six candidates, and we whittled it down to maybe thirty to thirty-five who would get jobs with ten contractors across the city of Philadelphia. For any of our individuals, our candidates who complete our RISE program, they get employment, employment placement, which the RISE program consists of job skills, job readiness, life skills, computer literacy, and we offer case management for up to a year. I would like to thank you for the opportunity in providing testimony on this critical issue and the PPS commitment to serve our citizens behind the walls and in the community. I am happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you for allowing us to testify.
Okay. Councilman Tottenberger.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. It, it really is with a, a request, and with your permission, Mr. Reed, you had mentioned that there is a film that you would make your, I, I would like to formally request that, that film for all members of this committee.
I would love to give it to you, and Benny Price is in it. He's the juvenile chief of, deputy chief of probation.
Well, it's great, just, at some point, yes. Please get it to our offices. And that's all. I, I thank you for your time and your expert testimony. I think it's meaningful, and I think it's important to get it from your perspective. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Vice Chair Johnson. Mr. Bagby, I know we met during the press conference with Council President Clark's Green Initiative, and we had a brief conversation. So from that initiative, that press conference, I know you, I believe you're working with NG Coordinating Agency in reference to that reentry program for job opportunities, is that correct?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
You're working with the ECA, or NG Coordinating Agency, in reference to that green jobs opportunity for returning citizens?
We've been working with the Pennsylvania Horticulture Society.
Oh, PHS, right.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
And so how many people are currently in the program now?
Yes, we had a hundred and six approximately candidates, and through the process, maybe thirty to thirty-five are going to be hired with ten contractors throughout the city. We haven't finalized the list yet, but it's in the process of being finalized.
Okay. And what's the source of funding for that program?
It was a five-hundred-thousand dollars that was taken out of the PPS's budget, and it's under city council.
So that was funding that came through, filled up a prison system, working with the Horticulture Society as well as RISE, in a collective effort?
Yes.
And it was, you said five-hundred-thousand dollars?
Yes, five-hundred-thousand dollars.
And what's the maximum number of people that can participate in that program?
Right now, it's thirty-five. Our pilot is for thirty-five, but if we can do an evaluation and show that this is successful, then we're looking to hopefully increase those numbers.
Okay. And under that pilot, you're doing data collection?
Yes.
In reference to success?
Yes. One thing I can tell you about the PPS, and now that RISE is under the umbrella of the PPS, is that we collect data on every individual that's in part of our process, our programs. For the PPS, everything is kept in an integrated jail management system. For RISE, everything is kept into what's called an ETO, Efforts Outcome Platform. So we are collecting the data on those individuals.
And what would we, what would we consider a success for that program?
Job and employment retention, seeing if individuals on that job for more than a year. We, we do have some success with people getting jobs, but the problem is, it's easy to get a job, but then there's a challenge with people getting, keeping the jobs. So if we can have someone that process maintain that job for close to a year, I would consider that a success.
And do you provide any type of either skills training or other type of assistance to people who receive the jobs?
Yes, like I said before, we do job readiness and life skills. Under the direction of Acting Commissioner Michael Resnick, we're looking into, we were awarded a JAG grant to have an employment placement agency come in a place close to a hundred and forty people, which we're looking forward to. But we also kind of ventured out into different areas that we never tapped into before, like the contractors. We're having our staff trained in a CAS, which is the Construction and Skills Test, so that way, that's kind of like the entry test everyone has to take to get into the utilities. So we did go through the training, we're just going to have some of our facilitators teach those classes, so that we can hopefully get individuals hired in some of these utility companies across Philadelphia.
So if you had additional funding, would you be able to double or triple the number of people participating in the program?
Yes, and I think you're probably, our testimony in front of the city council is April thirteenth, and I'm pretty sure Commissioner Resnick and Deputy Commissioner Blanche Carney are going to present to you their needs for employment placement, and also a housing component. We have a second chance grant that we got from the federal government, and it was with a hundred and five individuals who were sentenced, and a part of the grant was that you had to do ninety days of prison programming, and then upon release, you got, you know, reentry services. And a part of that was job placement and housing, and we, we saw that the housing was a, a great need for some of the individuals in that program.
Yeah, as you may have heard from our earlier questions, looking at alternative funding streams, because we have an unlimited amount of needs and limited amount of resources through the general fund, and looking at alternative ideas of public-private partnerships like social impact bonds, and it seems like something that could possibly be a candidate for that type of funding.
Yes, this was very informative. I, I heard the gentleman talk about the PCCD grants, which we did have some grants, but it's primarily for our veterans population, but I'm definitely taking notes, I'm going to go back to the powers that be and let them know that maybe we need to start looking at some PCCD grants for our juvenile population as well.
Thank you. I just had one question, one question for you as attorney. Reed, and I know you also work in partnership with the Focus Deterrence Program, because I remember there was an incident that took place in the Graves Ferry community, maybe two summers ago, where one of your officers came upon a young man who had an assault rifle, I guess going to commit a crime, and so I remember your organization actually being on the ground, as relates to Little Turf War that was going on around the Twenty-seventh Street area. For me, and my purpose of asking you to come, we're going to look at the best practices that you're already involved in, but just give me an answer, how do we, on a U.S. Attorney's level, raise this level of youth gun violence in the city of Philadelphia to be like one of the number-one priorities such as homeland security? Because I know based upon the feds, and what's the most critical issue that's addressing us, resources are diverted from one area to another. And so for me, on a federal level, I surely think that the loss of life of young men, the shootings of young men and young ladies on a day-to-day basis, and you mentioned yourself, here in the city of Philadelphia, since what, 2001, we had what, four hundred and, four, close to, close to five thousand, that would be shootings that have taken place.
No, no, over twenty-two-thousand people shot.
Yeah, twenty-two-thousand people shot. How, how do we continue to advocate? And I say this before I wrap this panel up and let our stenographer take a short break, and we continue the panels with most of the people on the ground actually doing this work. Give me an answer, how we raise that level of, of attention and making this a priority across, across the board, primarily on the federal level?
Well, I think that it is actually a priority on the federal level. President Obama and former Attorney General Eric Holder, and now Loretta Lynch, are certainly supportive of Smart on Crime and My Brother's Keeper initiatives, which really focus on the very issues that we're, we're involved with today. And that goes back to the Forum on Youth Violence, or the National Youth Violence Collaborative in the Twenty-second. That was an effort by the Department of Justice to really focus resources dealing with youth in a collaborative, holistic way. So I do believe that these are on the national level. I will tell you, though, that in addition, we have taken some of the things that we've been involved in, as well as trauma-informed care, I've gone down to our training facility in South Carolina, and, and with Dr. John Rich and Dr. Sandra Bloom, talked about trauma-informed care and the impact on youth, adults, and the impact on communities. So I think, as a matter of fact, well, maybe I shouldn't even get into it, but there is a lot of conversation about every, everything you've heard today, we are talking about on the national level.
On the federal level.
On the federal level, yes.
And, and, and I know your work, and I know the work that's been going on, on in the city of Philadelphia, so I do commend you for those efforts. I'm always just trying to continue to advocate, push, and I try to tell at least my constituents that I represent, and I don't want to make a political statement, but even the folks who represent us on a congressional level, like this has to be a part of your agenda. Same way I don't get a pass as a city councilman, as a former state representative, on a federal level, and this is not for you to respond to, but on a federal level, for all the activists who are here, they have to have an agenda for individuals who hold office on a federal level, and saying, what are you doing to reduce youth, youth gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia? Because I don't get a pass. You know, I come outside the house, I may have people knocking on my door, or I'm walking down the street, you know, it's the conversation, so I think that goes up to the federal level as well, to make sure that this is a priority in urban centers, but also, not urban centers, but across the board, because obviously, the issue of youth gun violence affects us in all neighborhoods. And so just wanted to touch base with you on that level. We're going to take a quick ten-minute break, and give our stenographer a chance to, to take a short recess, and then we come back. We have two and a half panels, there, I think there's three panels left, that are primarily grassroots-related, and we also have the District Attorney's Office, and then we'll be wrapping up the hearing. And I want to thank everybody for your patience. We knew this would be a marathon type of hearing, but we know that this is a very critical, important issue, and we wanted to make sure we touched all aspects, law enforcement, public policy, but most importantly, the people are on the ground, actually doing the work. So please be patient with us, and we're going to take a quick ten-minute recess.
Thank you.
Thank you.